Amen, thank you. Understood. Call the meeting to order for Trenton Public Education. Pledge of Allegiance.
Mary Ann, wait one second. We opened the meeting.
Couldn't hear that? Call the Board of Education meeting, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, five thirty P M. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Joel Trueheart.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Jean Bowie, absent. Addie Daniels Lane.
Present.
Austin Edwards, absent. Yolanda Lopez.
Present.
Larry Trailer.
Present.
Jeannie Weakland.
Present.
We have a quorum.
New Jersey sunshine law, New Jersey public beans law was enacted to ensure the rights to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted on. On the rules of this act, Trenton Public Education has caused notice of this meeting by publicizing the date time and place, therefore posted on the website, The Times and The Star Ledger. Formal action will take place at this meeting. Mission statement, all students will graduate with a vision for the future, motivated to learn continually in their choice and prepared to succeed in their choice of college or career. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
One moment, please. I do have an addendum to the agenda. I apologize for not bringing that up. First, we have an addendum to, for, one moment, please. Personnel transactions, we have new hires as well as a student study trip. So those are the two addendums for tonight's meeting. And as I want to reiterate that this is one of the areas that we agreed to as a board to give the superintendent the opportunity and really the recommendations to the board for addendums with these two areas being in those areas which we deem necessary for to have an actual agenda, which are new hires and study trips that impact kids. So those are the two agendas, two additional addendums on, two additional addendums on the agenda for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Probably move in the second at roll call.
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bowie, absent. Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards, absent. Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, well, we have a great distinct pleasure of having our field rep, Mary Ann Freeman, here this evening from New Jersey School Boards Association. We've known each other for, for many, many, many years and you've been not, not a stranger to this overall board and we thank you so much for taking your time to be here tonight. But before we get into that presentation, we will have remarks from our superintendent.
Good evening. Good evening, and welcome everyone to our meeting, March meeting. We just want to take this opportunity, hope everyone is healthy and preparing for the spring. I know spring break's coming up, it's a little bit later this year. So I know our team and everyone's excited about opportunities to get outside and enjoy the day. And so as we get around to our schools, we're seeing the same thing. So really excited about what's taking place in district, but I did want to report to parents about two critical issues and to the board that I know that people have been watching in the world today. One is that we've been listening and paying attention, close attention, to the reports that the Department of Education, the federal Department of Education might be eliminated or drastically reduced and how that might impact Trenton Public Schools and schools around us. We don't have direct information yet, but we know and will be sharing as we go through the budget presentation about dollars we receive that are earmarked as federal dollars. And so we don't know the impact of those. We haven't been told at all that we would not receive federal funding, but we have been thinking, talking, planning and preparing as if something might happen. And I know I've been asked that in many meetings and many, many circles, so. Just want to take this opportunity to thank the board for giving us an opportunity to share information about goal progress. I know each year we start this progress with this process very early to determine what we will attempt to accomplish during the year. And this in no way will share some of the really good things that are happening, but there is so much work to do and a lot of pain points in this work. But we want our public and we want the board to know that we're making steady progress and we'll continue to do so. And in the areas where we don't do as well, we plan to address those areas immediately. So tonight I have a few slides. I have a few slides more than I wanted to, so I moved through these very quickly to make sure, because they're really a lot of what we communicate with you already. But we tried to throw some things in there. We put a lot of images in to share with you because we think it's important as we talk about progress that you see it, if you can. And, and at the end in June, maybe have some video progress, some testimonials about what's taking place and what a struggle point. Like I'm not far away from that. I understand that in every success, there probably ten times you aren't successful. So let's jump right in, go in a different direction. I think I figured out why it wasn't moving. I was pressing the wrong button. So goal one, student achievement, the, the last, the slide before that was just the goals that you already have in your possession. But what we've done is tried to share some evidence and information that you can see of how we are accomplishing each goal and the heavy work that's taking place. So you see in goal one, the focus was on P B L, which is project-based learning, high-quality instruction and formative assessment. In E L A math, you see the blue links. What you see in those pictures is some of the work that's been taking place during the training sessions, during professional development. You see some of our staff members involved and engaged, but those blue links actually are hyperlinked and live. On the, on your, when I sent you the, the presentation and the public's presentation, you can actually click, click those links and see the evidence of how this work is being accomplished. It's vast, so we didn't want to click every link. We would be here for all of tonight. So I wanted you just to have an idea that we are making great progress and I have some data to share with you that I think speaks to the work that's taking place and teaching and learning and everything we do. We, we speak all the time about, about the five goals, how the five goals actually reach teaching and learning. Our breakthrough result is high-quality instruction in the classroom with appropriate resources. We want that to happen every day. So every building that we repair, every air conditioning unit, every P D that we have, that leads to this. So as you can see, we have some information here. This is quick information. I can certainly go into detail with you at a different date. But if you see in twenty-two, twenty-three with arrows, notice and note, notice and note is a research-based document that then helps our E L A supervisor actually started to push in in the seven twelve. This is information about the high school. We've shared a lot of information with you about elementary schools and how, how we're making gains. So we're going to start moving into how we're doing in the high schools at the secondary levels. But you can see we've made steady progress and because the ninth grade, you see Tanga, the pilot and adoption. So the first twenty-two, twenty-three was notice and note. That's the conversation, some of the training and planning of the teachers with the supervisors getting ready for it. Twenty-three, twenty-four is implementation. Tanga has a year-long E L A program, so the only assessment we can see this time of year is assessment Form B. That's why you don't see the comparison on the other side. So as you can see, for three years, we've made small gains, right? But gain is gain, one percent each year. If you go over, take those same students from twenty-two, twenty-three and move them to the tenth grade, English two, Form A to Form C. You can see because we believe of the implementation of the work, the professional development of notice and note and the work by our staff, our teachers, our supervisors, we're starting to see those gains. Thirty-seven percent from twenty-eight percent when we started Form A in twenty-three, twenty-four. You see the twenty-four, twenty-five scores moved to thirty-seven percent at the end. And you actually see a gain in Form A in both of them. You see a dip in Form A and the English three, that would be students who were ninth graders in twenty-two, twenty-three who are now eleventh graders. But you also in Form C on, that's the last assessment, that's the comparison assessment, how much growth you've had. If you digest that, you can see we've come from twenty-eight percent to start with for tenth graders to our eleventh graders on link at Form C. That's our internal assessment, being proficient at forty-seven percent, which we're proud of to see, oh, forty-one. I need glasses to get that close, so, but getting there, so forty-one percent. So we're excited about that. Let's see, this is that information shared again. If you look at the dark blue bar graph represents the implementation or the conversation around the, the note. Notice and note, because I'm going to go fast and forget it. The orange is implementation. You can see in the implementation years of ninth grade and those ninth graders, the reason why we have those two data points circled, those ninth graders are now in tenth grade. And you can see they went from fifteen point three percent to thirty, thirty point four percent in the new year, from the beginning to the end of the year. So you can see where we're making gains with this. This is the same information. If you look up to the big arrows on N J S L A, N J G P A, E L A data trends, nine, ninth graders made six percent three-year growth, eleventh graders made five percent three-year growth. And down at the bottom, our Hooten, Mifflin and Harcourt reading level, lead, reading level assessment percentage at or above averages from the beginning of the year, B O Y sixteen point two percent to twenty-seven percent. That's plus ten point eight. So that's gain, that's work, and we believe our staff and our students are doing tremendous work in the classroom. Our teachers are working really hard, are working with each other and learning how to continue to implement. We also have implemented Avid in twenty-three, twenty-four. Twenty-eight teachers were trained impacting twenty-one hundred students. We think this is our way to really move. Teachers are excited, staff members are excited, so you can see a hundred and forty-two teachers are now trained impacting ten thousand students. And the focus of this group, they meet often, is writing, all three middle schools and the ninth grade academy, correct? All three middle schools and we have intent to go in the tenth grade and then to Capital City in the new year. But we have teams that work together, are visiting one of their meetings. It's outstanding work around writing instruction, what it means to write high quality. So just wanted to share these things on the academic achievement. We're no longer just talking to ourselves because we can hear us forever and agree with us, even dispute us sometimes, but students tell the truth. So we have a student superintendent, student advisory council. We've met twice, robust, rich, really, really awesome to be with students because they tell you what adults can't say. They tell you like it is. They're on the ground, so we're listening and we're teaching them how to be leaders, how to bring information to us with facts. Not social media information, but what's factually taking place. So they've been really, really bright, really, really competent, really, really smart. So our technology and innovation progress in goal one, you've seen probably this slide if any of you who've been able to go to McKnight Elementary School and maybe Holland Middle School in their space, Jefferson, Dunn. We are, we are outfitting all twenty-five spaces over the next three years. The spaces are amazing. You can see some of the work. This was just an idea on paper after the information technology specialist at McKnight designed it by hand. And then our vendor came in and constructed this and then it turned into this. This is real-time, real life, if you want to go there and see it. It has these, this is a real picture of the media center there, redone from soup to nuts. And it's our goal to do all of our spaces that way. To continue, you can see Holland Middle School's innovation space. If you go there, it's totally redone. We've redone Dunn Middle School and we'll continue to add schools as we go through this process. You can see our team at Jefferson, who is probably the, the furthest ahead. They are actually innovating and we're working with them closely as they begin to integrate the technology into the instruction, like taking a con, taking content, information and applying it using the technology. That's the goal. We're not just purchasing the iPad and all of the screens and some of these pretty things that you see. We want this to be a learning tool and a learning structure always, so you see that at Jefferson. And they've presented many times, but you can see the kids using green screen. Ninth grade academy autism class takes a virtual trip with V R class headsets. So we have V R class headsets around the district and so those are really cool. So I advise you to sit in a chair when you put them on so you don't fall, Brother Bowie. And then you can see our work and our progress so far. So green means active. These schools are active, orange is developing, inactive means they haven't started yet, but we are bringing three or four schools on a ti, on at a time. So our goal now is to capture the rest of the schools and begin to implement and then innovation schools. We have two schools that have moved really close to, like they, they're deep. If you go in their schools, their, their students can speak the language. One school has a hundred percent of their teachers Apple certified, Apple teaching certified. I forget the exact language, but it's really neat to go in and see students using this, this, this technology to learn and they're excited. It changes the way the classroom feels when you can walk in and engage in that way. Go-to, community engagement. That was all under goal one. That's connected to how we're trying to create spaces to learn some of the professional development. Kindergarten registration is underway. We've made an effort this year to get our kindergarteners out earlier. So that's trying to communicate and engage with the public and the community and parents, let them know that they can come in and register now. And just to be clear, registration does not come with pain. It can be painful sometimes because we learn on the fly. We're dealing with sometimes people who may not have the documentation needed, so we want a process. And our number one goal is to not keep children out of school. So sometimes it's very painful when we're going through this and we'll continue to work to make that process better. But our parent programs, you see our Healing Heart series on the right. We have multiple, multiple schools, multiple nights. You can see our Parent Connect series on the left. We continue to connect in the community, getting our parents engaged. And this is one that we're really excited about. We have a tri-district consortium that's Trenton, Hamilton and Ewing. We are working together to define, outline, create what community schools really are. We have community schools written in our strategic plan and we have two or three fully functional in district. So we're saying, I've talked with Ms. Howard recently about committing funding the right way so that we can build this out. But this is really neat. This is from one of our sessions. Mrs. Sung and Mrs. Grant have attended with me. Eventually, most of our team will go and understand what it means to be an actual community school. We all think we do, but when you go there, there's so many pillars, so many tenants, so many things you need to know. So the Mercer Community School Coalition, we go once a month and we spend lots of time and we're trying to become a tri-district consortium to be able to apply for large amounts of funding because it's difficult to do it in one space, but if you have a large space, then you have a better chance. So we're really excited about that. You know that we, if you haven't seen them here, the, the billboards around the city, some of you have been able to communicate in English and Spanish on your P S As, so we're still communicating to the public and engaging the public on getting our kids to school. That's why I made the statement earlier. It is safe to come to school. It's safe as we can make it. But this is cool to see if you haven't seen those around the city. We partner with Isles, Stacy Heading and his team to create these billboards around the city. Communications, you know that we're redesigning the logo. If you missed that opportunity, it was really cool. So we will spend time designing the logo, but you see some other things, some professional development. And then just regular communications, you know, because we communicate on the website, social media. This allows us to talk about what our story is. Styles change, but stories endure. And in those meetings, I learned about the history of Trenton. I know that I better not touch the colors, right? I did learn that and I have people on that stage that said, do not touch the colors. Don't dab a little blue in it. So what we're learning about the logo and we've done, we've had logo presentations or meetings with students, community, parents, our staff, and there've been battles in those meetings about what we want. Hopefully we come away from this with understanding our history, but not only that, what it means to us. If you know what the logo stands for, because no one really knew what the little flowers were on that logo, right? And we started doing the research, that's wheat on the logo. So we're doing some work there. This is the timeline for logo rebranding. For those of you who have been in those spaces, if you want to be in that space and you're an audience, let me know because we can get you in that space. It's really cool to see, but discover, define and design. We're defining now. We'll be in the design phase soon. We're defining now, we'll be in the design phase soon. Um, and this is the survey that's going to go out, uh, maybe tonight. If not, it will go out tomorrow, uh, district-wide logo survey, just asking everyone's opinions, uh, thoughts, ideas on everything from color to style to what should be left in from the old logo. So this, these are all ways we build community around us by bringing them in. Um, and this is something to look forward to. Uh, this is the brainchild of one of our board, board members who uh, has been attempting to get us moving. So uh, these are our first two spotlights, which will come out very soon. And then we will actually be reaching out to solicit interest in our citizens academy. So those two, we have designed and ready to go with those. And uh, so we will be asking if you know Trenton alumni that we want to spotlight send names. I have a list of names that we'll go through, but we'll likely, I know there's some Trenton graduates on this stage. So we'll be interested in talking with them at some point. There's a survey that goes out, collects a lot of information and do we, we do a feature story on that. But you can see we were able to get this fairly quickly. And so if you send someone to me, make sure I have contact numbers, they're interested, all of the above. Um, developing the whole child, uh, you know, some of our work there and what we're doing around trauma-informed care. But we're also doing some climate information. Very interesting when you look at this, if you haven't seen the NJ Sky surveys, the school climate improvement survey that we've given out to schools. We're in our third year for pilot schools, second year for uh, all other schools. We had seven or eight pilot schools. What you see, if you look across most, most of us, and you'll likely hear people that come here, talk about how awful it is in Trenton. And I'm the first one to say publicly, not the first one, but I say often, no, this is just not a bad place. It's just where we are, where we live, you know, don't say that about where children stay, you know? We're quick to do that sometime. But if you look at uh, since, I'm going to talk about sense of physical state, the light blue line, the really light blue line. With the, with the cutoff score of they flag your score if you're below two point five. Sense of physical safety for students was three point one one. For uh, at the top, maybe I'm looking staff, it was three point one oh. For parents, I think it was three point, two point eight five, oh, six twelve. Students in six twelve, uh, two point eight five. For staff, it was three point one oh. For parents and caregivers, it was three point three three. So this is a survey where people can talk about us, talk about us as much as they want, scores the way they want. This is the score and we've gotten tons of data from this. If you look above that to the teal looking line, you see a yellow triangle, right? So that line is, I mean, set away, negative student interpersonal behaviors. That's how students behave and you can see all four areas are under two point five. What does that tell us? That tells us that that's an area to work on. And so our schools are already working on those things to see if we can get better results when this survey goes out the next time. But I wanted to show you just an example of what this looks like. So when we're talking about climate, we're doing the work, we're actually finding out what the people are saying about their space and then making decisions based on that data. Um, developing the whole child quarter to progress around uh, trauma-informed care. Um, the following schools have scheduled and provided workshops for their parents. You can see Gregory Kilmer, uh, Hedge Path, TCHS, Tanga Franklin, Stokes, Jefferson, CCHS in Washington. All schools have the hope team, the hope is healthy outcomes from positive experience. The hope teams exist in all of our schools. So we're really excited because it's a lot of work. We had to check ourselves and say, are we giving principals and uh, staff too much? Because we're asking them, you know, they have every formal mandatory committee. And then we have them creating other committees to try to get information for us to help our families and our students. So uh, you can see some of the good work going there. This is how we collect information, we just wanted to show you this, this is in your file. So if you want to look through and see what we collect to make determinations about how to assist families, please do. Staff development, well-being, we had a powerful day with staff. Uh, we believe that the third year has been our best year. But Tina, Dr. Bettina Love was our main presenter. Uh, she gave an awesome presentation, uh, relating her life to education, talking to our educators about who we teach and understanding who they are, how they don't learn the way I did and what that means for us in education now. So you can just see other images of us in the classroom, in the auditorium, in the gyms, working together, just learning together. And we've had a good year of doing that. As I said, professional development doesn't come without pain points either. Because not everything we do, everybody likes. And so we get that, we have to do better, have to make sure we get information for our people. Uh, uh, dodgeball, if you didn't know, we had a final four team on the right. Final four and wide move and the cheerleaders. The business office represented the district office well. Uh, they made it to the final four, I think the semifinal, was it semifinal? Final four and eventually lost to guess who, Austin H U. You know, uh, the students who were here on alternative spring break who participated. So what a great opportunity. We had teachers and students and people getting hit in the face with balls. And so next year, we need a board team. Uh, I don't know who's going to lead that, but I won't be on it because I stayed in the stadium this time, Gene. Uh, just want you to know. But really exciting and the way we're thinking about staff well-being, we do have a date in May, May seventh for staff. Um, uh, what is it called? May seventh is Wellness Wednesday, I'm sorry, forgetting my terms, Wellness Wednesday. Um, so let's go through. So other things is, you know, we have our uh, NJ uh, educators wellness program through our health provider. Uh, for twenty-fourth calendar year, we had thirteen hundred employees were enrolled and twenty-three employees see, received gift, gift cards. You can earn money uh, in this program by walking, just staying healthy. It promotes good health. Some of our uh, departments have teams, some of our schools have teams. So we're promoting healthy living through this process. Finance and facilities, uh, district-wide interior LED right, lighting upgrades. There's some images about what we're doing in some of our schools. If you walk in, you can see it, you notice the difference in here when you walk in as opposed to the beginning of the year. We'll continue to do that. Uh, currently seventy percent of our schools are completed. Um, uh, air-conditioned spaces uh, in our, in all large gathering auxiliary spaces. So we're talking about big spaces like gyms. We have that up and running in classroom, we're committed to get that in big spaces too. Because you might come from a classroom that's nice and balanced to a gym that's a hundred degrees in the summer or freezing cold in the winter. So we're hopeful to get that balance, but a lot of good work going on there. Um, we're proud that we are a hundred percent complete on all of our um, fire inspection certificates. We just wanted to share a couple there. So a lot of good work, some of the things we committed to in our goal work is happening or happened. Um, improvement of maintenance in school grounds, I can't wait. I've been in my yard already in the cold. So we started that fight in the previous year. And we're going to approach it again with a different intent to make sure that our grounds look great on the outside and our buildings look great on the inside. We are committed, so if you hear about me, you'll know uh, that, that we're committed to that process. No excuses, we want these things to be done. Uh, I think that you're going to see a difference and we are, we've worked to get the appropriate number of staff members. Sometimes when things aren't kept up, it's because we're down-staffed and that's a part of life. But as long as we have people here, we'll work to make sure we have great ground space. Um, the Zagler Building, as you know, uh, we're involved in the demolition process, which will start or has started. Uh, asbestos abatement, forty percent complete, overall project completion date is in August. Um, finance facilities around the budget, as you know, you've had your budget presentations. We'll be, be presenting as soon as the county, I think in April, we present because the county has to approve. We're really excited and we talked about uh, some of the funding, we received some of the funding that was taken. We feel fortunate here because all of our employees who want to work here can continue to do so. And we feel very fortunate because we believe we can continue to implement high-quality program, programming for our students, our staff uh, and our families in the district. So uh, this, you can see we are working with the bank to increase our rate. Uh, and then setting some parameters uh, to have the ability automate charter schools and preschools providers. So uh, you can see some of the progress there. Um, and then in uh, we, you know, STEM civics uh, did announce and informed us that they would be closing. So we had a STEM civics recruitment fair on grounds at STEM civics. We were fortunate to get five staff members. We will continue to work, we're also making sure that we're paying attention around us as districts might communicate that staffing might be reduced. Uh, we're always looking for high-quality people. Sometimes we've struggled to get vacant, uh, vacancies filled in those high priority areas like bilingual special education, ESL, go down that list. And, and in a teacher shortage, almost every position now has become a high priority. So we did go there, we're looking at their spaces also uh, to see uh, the quality of the physical space to see if the district might be interested if we were to uh, need space for students. We're already taking students, we have April first, second and third as evening registration at STEM, for STEM civics. We'll be working to create teams who are here in the evening that can register students who want to come. Uh, we are hoping that students, we take them if they come, but we hope they finish the year there so that they can get appropriate credit. I was on the uh, phone Friday with their superintendent, just discussing logistics. So we're working closely with them to tran, transition, so. And I think that is the final slide for me. Uh, any questions? A lot of information, uh, I just wanted to give you a small swath of kind of what's taking place. Uh, and I know I went through it fast, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Um, what I'd like to do is, um, if board members can have comments uh, to the presentation, then any specific detailed questions would be in executive session. But certainly general questions uh, can be, can be asked at this time, or board comments, thank you.
Yeah, yes, I, I just have a one question. You mentioned the Hope, H O P E program? Tell, tell me about that again, I was, I was writing, but I, I didn't, I don't think I recorded everything.
Healthy outcomes from positive uh, uh, experiences.
And, and what, what is that again?
That's a team in the school building.
Oh, okay, it's a team.
Team in the school building that focuses on creating positive experiences, which we hope will result in healthy outcomes. Um, so teams meet about and use data such as referral data to the office, students who are acting out, students who are withdrawn in school. Can we create structures by which they are active in the educational process? So there's so many things, and if you look at that form that's right behind that, that form collects specific data about students and the family to determine what we do next, maybe with an individual student or with a group.
Okay, and it's in every school, is that what you said, is in every school?
Every school, all, all twenty-five schools, yes.
Great, so I have three points. So the first one is around uh, the growth. You know, I'm like passionate about this reading thing, right? And to see that growth, well done, all right? So, so I think it's important that folks pay very close attention to how much our children are growing. Um, when you look at where we start from, it's not where you start from, it's where they move to. And so, well done, that was the first one. The second one was um, uh, ooh, oh yeah, the spaces. I really got to get some time off to come visit those spaces because that fantastic, alive. And children learn better when things are, are like that. And then the last one is, I'm excited, we're going to buy another building and keep a charter school from opening. Never mind, okay, I'm just close on.
You have to borrow money to do it, but.
We had to figure out, but that's a great, it's great that it's being investigated because we do need space, but we also need to watch the competition, so.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, one, one of the points I'll make about students, just quickly, that uh, we, we listen to what I think, how the public and people may view our students as a whole. But we are ultra-focused on them, which doesn't allow us to pay a lot of attention to what people think they know. We're spending time finding out the facts and that's how you educate. You have to know where people are, where they're coming from and meet them where they are. So we will implement programming that does just that. And it might not be popular, but at the end of the day, we're interested in growth. And can our kids get to that goal line and can we build foundations?
I have a question. Um, a lot of the data you presented on the growth was high school related. Um, my question is, what are our third graders doing? Since we started this program three years ago, when they were in kindergarten, how's their foundation coming along?
We see growth in third graders too.
But are you seeing them because they've been in it since kindergarten? Are you seeing them at a higher level?
So what I will do, I mean, standing here, I can talk about it, what I'll do, we made a conscious effort in this particular presentation because we always talk about elementary. We presented elementary data from the time I got here. So we want to be able to present in June, I'll have both. And we'll have uh, D R A data and anything that we can share about their progress. But we're seeing progress, we see it in higher in some pockets, I do a language immersion students, I'm told are performing well. So we're seeing students do well. I would just prefer to have that official data in front of you. I'll do that for you.
I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you. This is exactly the presentation that we're, we're looking forward to. And thank you to your staff and all the teachers involved that have adapted this vision, adopted it rather, and are really making it theirs. We're seeing as, you know, they may be small growth now, but they are certainly bigger than they were last year.
Yes.
So it could only snowball from here, thank you very much, continue with the good work.
Yep, we, we want to stay steady. Uh, we know that you, you know, you have to build the foundation before you can actually live in the house. So our goal is to continue to build and eventually we hope that things move, so. But we're realistic, we know where we are, we understand the challenge, so want to be smart about that.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing as my um, board member felt, followed up with. I deeply appreciate this presentation, a lot of great information. I was just curious because I had a chance to go and visit some of the schools with you. And one of the things that really made me feel really excited in visiting the schools was seeing the leader in me and a lot of the billboards inside the schools. And I would love for you to talk a little bit about that, especially as we talk about um, one of the goals being, especially in the school climate survey, uh, dealing with students interpersonal behaviors and how the district is already setting up those strategies.
So any leadership program, if you spend the time, I think that uh, what happened uh, maybe in the past is commitment was very different. So we said, in the face of adversity, we're going to commit to this. And what it does is if we don't teach third graders, second graders and first graders how to be leaders, they're not seventh and eighth and ninth grade leaders, right? All of the students who lead, but we did, just didn't quit there. Those student advisory panels that I've started, that's going to go down from nine, twelve to seven, eight to four, six. So we plan to close gaps on this because we seeing, that's where you see less behavior, more um, uh, collaboration. When there's an incident, kids say, can we go to the reset room? Can we have time in the space? That's a taught and now learned behavior that's adverse to what they learn in the beginning. It might've been hands first. And so we're teaching hands down, talk first, talk to each other, talk to an adult, get that out. A reset room allows you, and it's off limits, you can go in and say, and almost do, as long as you don't hurt yourself or anyone, whatever you feel like you need to reset. And then we're going to try to resolve the issue. But I've been in schools where students come the same way, they show up. Our students don't show up different, right? They show up like you know they show up. The work we have to do is to show up different when we are in, in uh, in their presence. Okay, so tell me what's going on. Okay, so tell me what's going on. And as I said to someone recently, so is that really how you feel? You know, you have to talk through that, and you get through a point where they're having that conversation because they might not have been able to explain it to you. So leader in me, many of our social and emotional programs, it's really about teaching, you know, kids how to regulate themselves, how to manage conflict without saying, it's conflict resolution. We take them in there and we're saying, we're teaching you how not to fight. Now, we have to teach you about good leadership. And I'm telling you, for all of you sitting there and anyone sitting here, if you're good leaders, you learned that when you were one, then two, then three, then four, and then first grade, then kindergarten. It just keeps repeating itself. It is a system. And what we're hoping to do around that work, if we don't do, if we don't teach you how to add, subtract, or write a letter, if you're great at people, you can do work in the world. So, but we do want to teach that other stuff. We want to teach it at a very high level. But you got to be a good person and understand how to manage people. And our kids are learning to do that. So we're really excited about that work. But I knew when I came, I needed to provide some achievement data. I love talking about all the great things we're doing around social and emotional education and character, education and building the student. But I also know that we have the public looking to see, are you making gains? And we talked to the staff about that. We are charged to do that, and it's my job to continue to push us to get to that point. So we'll keep doing that work. Thank you.
Any other comments? That's it? Questions? All right. Next presentation by Mary Ann Freeman, New Jersey School Board Association, Senior Field Service Representative. Thanks, Mary Ann.
Okay, well, actually, before we do that, if I could just say, that was a wonderful presentation on where the, how you've been working on the district goals and letting everybody know where you are. Because that's really important because you're getting ready to do your evaluation, and the board is getting ready to do your evaluation. So they really need to know that information, and you need to know that they know it so that they don't, when they sit down to do your evaluation, they're not scratching their heads and saying, we haven't talked about this in months. So you've been talking about that, and that's really wonderful. It's very exciting to me to see all the great things that you're doing in the school district also, and I think your students can only benefit from it. I know that it takes time to make those kind of incremental changes, but it sure sounds like you're all very focused on that. And I know that because we sat together, if you remember last summer, and developed those district goals. And so what I'd like to do first, before I do ethics, is talk to you about your board's self-evaluation, because that's another high point for today. So I'd like to leave one, have one high point lead into another. Okay, so in your packet on the right-hand side, you all have your board's self-evaluation. There's no PowerPoint for this. And as you know, this is something that we consider any board that's doing the work at a 3.0 or above in the averages to be doing a very effective job and working well together. Okay, and all of your scores are over, well over 3.0. So on the first page, the things that we asked you to do were to give quantification of relative value of those nine areas that we ask you to evaluate yourselves on. And I'm very happy to announce that your student achievement and board performance were given the highest rating of 4.0. I can't tell you how much that means to me when I come in and meet with the board and they've given a 4.0 to student achievement, because that means that that's their laser focus. That's what they're truly focused on over the year. Everything else is right in there between 3.6 and 4.0, so you're doing really, really well with that. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the planning section. And by the way, this is the last year that we've used this evaluation. So next year, when you do this, the end of this year, when you go to work on this, it's a new evaluation tool. And it's really working on how you feel you individually have done as a board member and have performed and worked together as a board member, and how you feel the board has worked together. So it's really going to be looking at you as individuals and as a board. And we've modeled that pretty much in collaboration with the CSA evaluation or the Chief School Administrator Evaluation. So the scoring is still the same, is the same. All of those ratings are the same as the CSA evaluation now. So in terms of planning, this is, you're doing an excellent job, excuse me, with broad community input. You established a district-wide vision and goals, multi-year plan for education, and you plan and collaboratively set those goals every year. So you can further, you take your strategic planning goals, which are at the top, and then those filter down to your district goals. They filter down to your building goals, to administration goals, to department, to building goals, to department goals, all the way down to improving student achievement. That's how that whole system works, and you're doing that on a regular basis. Your comments are all very positive. They're all about working together. I know that you don't always agree on things, and that's okay, but you don't go after each other when you disagree on something. You use, you know, you're civically and civilly engaged in dialogue without going after one another personally and attacking somebody, and that means a lot. And that's why you've had all of this training together. You're a master board, you're master board certified, which I have to compliment you on again because we did that last spring, I think, or did we do it in the fall? Did we do it in the fall? We did it in the fall at the county meeting. So you earned your master, it was the fall, you earned your master board certification. And that means that you have worked together to get that training and that professional development. And oftentimes, board members don't realize how much they need that personal board development and professional development as a team, because when you work together as a team, you come together as a team. And that's how you benefit from that professional development, just like your students benefit from your teachers' professional development, your staff's professional development. You benefit from working as a team together because you learn how to work together. You understand each other's working styles. We did a program on that over the summer, and you learned about each other's working styles, so you know why people are asking the kinds of questions that they ask. And understanding that allows you to be more accepting of people and how they learn the way they do and how they make decisions the way they do. Because otherwise, it can be easy to just say, I don't know why this person needs this information, this is crazy, and not want to listen to them. But you do listen to each other, and you've learned all of those things through some of that professional development. In terms of policy, this is also an area of strength. You're operating as a policymaking body, and you're reviewing and updating your policies in accordance with CUSAC regulations. CUSAC, NJ CUSAC is the New Jersey, oh my gosh, I just went blank, Quality Account, Quality Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Wow. There's only one other time that I did that, and it was in front of 300 people at a Governance One training. It was like in 2009, and I absolutely went blank. And I always said from then on, I was going to write down exactly what CUSAC was just in case, and I didn't do it this time. And I asked somebody in the audit, if somebody could tell me what CUSAC was, and they rose to the occasion and they did it. But it makes sure that all of your bylaws and your policies and your regulations are all up to date and all being revised and looked at on a regular basis. And again, your comments are all very positive in that you're working together always to improve your policies and move them forward when they need to be, revising them and looking at them on a regular basis. Student achievement, this is also an area of strength, requiring written curriculum with specific evaluation components in accordance with all statutes. A lot of teams don't have that, don't make sure that they have that. You're already having that, and you had some of that tonight. You were given some of that information tonight. And then using the expertise of your professional staff and your professional administrators to be able to bring student achievement advances and different revisions that they all would like to see, along with your administrative team, and be able to approve those and put those into effect, and make sure that it's always focused on student achievement. Okay, next is finance. This is also an area of strength for you, exercising financial oversight over the district budget. Okay, making sure that you have, you know, your community has the ability to pay and that you're being financially accurate and financially responsible to your citizens. And then also balancing the educational needs of your students with the budgetary requirements that you have. And that was also very positive. When you see something that's blackened out in the comments, it's because it could be evaluative of a staff member or the superintendent or the business administrator or an administrator. I can tell you that they're positive, okay? There's nothing here that's negative, but a positive evaluation is just, this is not the place for those evaluations to happen, okay? You can't, the board does not evaluate the business administrator. The board evaluates the superintendent, the superintendent evaluates everybody else. Okay? Board operations, this was also very high, holding your meetings in compliance with all of your policies, bylaws, and statutes, making sure that you respect the administration's leadership by thoroughly deliberating on the superintendent's recommendation. And then as a board, all four of those areas below, method of board governance contributes to the overall effectiveness and efficiency of the board, board method of governance has clearly defined bylaws, and our board method of governance lessens the total work of board members, and it also ensures appropriate communication to the board. Those were all very, very high, and you can see that through those numbers. And equally as the board, about you as the board member, those ratings were very high also. Sometimes I see boards that rate themselves as a board very high, and then when they look at themselves, they're not going out and getting that professional development. But you all have done that because each of you is individually certified in one way or the other in any of our certification programs. And remember, the individual certification is when you as an individual come out to us, to NJ SBA for training. So it could be workshop annually in October, it could be county meetings, it could be the delegates' assembly, and it could be going to webinars. And there was the, we just had the Women's Leadership Conference, so some of you went to that. Be able to go to those things, that gives you individual credit. When I come in and meet with you, or somebody from NJ SBA comes in to meet with you, and there are seven of nine board members here, you receive board credit for that. That's how you got from board certified to master certified, because in addition to the 16 credits that you did, which are 16 hours of additional training, not just sitting here as a board, but additional training hours and professional development, then you went the extra mile and within two years achieved 10 more hours of training. And that got you your master certification. So congratulations again. Board, I'm sorry?
One year.
That's right, it was one year. And at that point, at that point, I had just gotten Mercer County back, okay? Because Jessie Adams was retiring. And I remember Ms. Merer Lopez calling me and saying, we need to do this in a year by the fall. And I said, no, you have two years to do this. And she said, oh no, we plan on doing this in one year. And I remember saying on the phone, you're killing me. I don't know how, because remember, you're not the only district that I have, and to get 10 hours in in one year is a lot. So we did that with a couple of different Friday nights and Saturdays. We combined, we had two hours on a Friday night, three hours on Saturday. You were all there, you worked together, and it was really wonderful. And I really do use you guys as a model, and you men and women as a model. Sorry, I don't mean to say you guys. That was perfect timing. But I do use you all as a model for that. And I think that, you know, what you do is wonderful, and I know you want to continue to achieve those credits, and you'll get credits for tonight as well. So that all gives you credits towards maintaining those certifications. So your board performance, you had a bunch of 4.0s in there where they're really your strengths, recognizing the need and importance for confidentiality, making sure that everybody's working together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect, and also operating within and adhering to the code of ethics, which we're going to go over next. Okay? The next area was board superintendent relationships. This is also very high, respecting the management responsibilities of the superintendent, not delving into the day-to-day operations. Those are all things that need to be done for a board to be effective. Not getting into the minutia and the day-to-day operations is huge. Making sure that you're working with the superintendent in an atmosphere of trust and respect. Maintaining those open lines of communication from him to all of you and from you to Mr. Earl. Conducting that comprehensive CUSAC review every three years and working with the superintendent to develop the performance objectives and goals. And we did that over the summer, and we worked, we spent a lot of time working on those. And I think it's showing that those things are working because your focus as a team, as a board superintendent team and administrative team is all focused on student improvement and student achievement. So again, congratulations on that. Board-staff relationships, this is also very high, providing effective personnel policy, direction, and oversight, recognizing the importance of staff development. I heard a lot about staff development in Mr. Earl's, you know, update on the board, on the district goals. That's wonderful that you're making sure that they have that. And treating district staff with courtesy and respect, also very, very important. When you hold that respect for your staff, they can turn around and hold that respect for you because they know it's equal. Okay? And that was it, pretty much it for board-staff relationships. Board and community is next, and that's an area of strength for you also. I love what you're doing with the community and all of those programs that you're doing, those parent programs, acting as representatives for every student in your school, not just your kids or your grandchildren or your best friend's kids. Making sure that community involvement is encouraged in the district, also promoting the community use of school buildings and school facilities was also very high. So those were all areas of strength. Then the next thing that we ask you to do is talk about what your highest priority is. In talking about your highest priority being student achievement, what are three major challenges that you feel are facing the district in the upcoming year? And not surprising, all of the things that you talked about are already being highlighted in those district goals. Okay? You're talking about student growth and performance and attendance, talking about special ed, continue to provide that compliance, bilingual education, increasing graduation, changes in federal policy. We don't know what's coming down from the federal level. And so being prepared for that and the fact that you all are working on that to make sure that you're updated and that you know what's coming down as soon as it happens is really important. Continuing professional development for your teachers and your staff, continuing to be aware of any budgetary challenges that you might have, increasing enrollment, teacher and staff shortages, and community involvement. Those were all some of the challenges, and those are all what's already being addressed in the district goals that you all developed for this year. And they're being addressed in a positive way, and they're accelerating and they're taking effect. Then we ask you, in terms of effective oversight, what specific areas of board governance require additional focus on your part? You talked about board retreats, so I'm sure that there's going to be a phone call coming very soon about, we need some dates for board retreats. And that's fine, that's wonderful. Continuous improvement for the board. You expect your students and your staff to have continuous improvement, and you expect that of yourselves as well. And that really means a tremendous amount. Equity and inclusion, understanding student data, which Mr. Earl went over some of that with you tonight. And he talked more about the high school because usually these things are talking more about elementary, but he's already said, you're going to get all of that information and see what that looks like for your end-of-the-year conclusion of how things wrapped up with the district goals. Your stakeholder engagement, your strategic plan is through the end of this year, and then you'll be able to start working on another strategic plan if you would like to. So we can talk about that. Legal and policy trends, you want to stay up to date on those. Looking at school board notes, which comes out every week, and also looking at school leader, which comes out four times a year, you can really get a lot of information about labor relations, governmental relations, and legal and policy kinds of updates in those areas. And then there's also, I don't know if you're aware, that there's a new newsletter that's going out, I believe it's going to be four times a year called Capital Watch, and that talks about legislation. And so there's one issue that's gone out already, and if you go to advocacy resources on our website, there's advocacy resources as a tab. And if you go to advocacy resources on our website, there's advocacy resources as a tab, you'll see on the right-hand side, Capital Watch. So you can click on that and you can get lots of really good information on that. So that's your board self-evaluation. And then to take that further, we look at the charts. So we always have the charts and you all have this in your packet as well. The first five areas from planning to board operations are, those are your task areas. And that's where we often find that the board feels that they do better as a board together than they do as individuals. And then the last four areas are your relationship areas. And we, what we looked at on this first chart is how you rated the value and then how closely you feel the board is working towards that value. And you can see that those two columns are very close together. There's not a big gap between those areas. Okay, which is also very positive. The second chart talks about your board to individual ratings. And so in this one, in the blue and the, and the yellow, you can see that in policy, finance, board operations and board staff relationships, the board rated itself higher than you did as individual board members. And then in five areas, you rated yourselves as individuals a little bit higher than the board. But all of those things are very positive, they're all very close together, there's no big gaps there. I don't see, you know, a full point. And remember, we're looking at anywhere from zero to 4.0. So if there's a gap of point five, it's a big gap, and I'm not seeing that anywhere. Then the last thing that we look at is your chart this year to last year. Now, next year, you will not have this chart to look at because there's a different chart based on the standards that we've put together for the new board self-evaluation. But you can see that in all nine areas, they're rated above 3.0 and are pretty much very similar to last year. There might be, they might be off by point one, but that's not statistically significant either. So in all of these areas, you're doing just as well as you have over the past year. And that's really something that's positive. Any questions on the board self-evaluation? This is really good and it shows the work that you've done. As I said to Ms. Wieglem in the, in the conference room, I said, "This is a really good evaluation." She said, "Do you know why?" And I said, "Yes, I do, because you all work together and you work together to get that professional development, to be able to work more effectively together." And that's when we see scores like this. So again, congratulations. I look forward to working with you again over this next year. I'm not going anywhere. And I hope that's a good thing as far as you guys are concerned. And if nobody has any questions, we'll go into ethics. Okay, and see, see how we can get through this. Okay, so this is the ethics program for school officials. This is our basic disclaimer. The information that we're giving you tonight is not legal advice, it's information. If you have questions about legal advice or need legal advice, you would always want to talk to Mr. Roll about that. Okay, he's your board attorney, he's the only person you should be taking legal advice from. Okay? The next thing is, the School Ethics Act was really developed in order to, the legislature wanted to feel that it was essential that the conduct of school board members provide that, have that respect and that confidence of the people in their communities. And so in order to do that, they put together some guidelines which will make sure that you're not violating the public's trust and will also make sure that you're not even giving a justifiable impression of violating the public trust. Okay, with the ethics presentation and with the Code of Ethics, it's not just whether somebody actually violated, but if they've given a justifiable impression to the public or to the staff that they have violated the public trust. Okay? So in order to guide the conduct, school officials have the benefit of some specific standards and then some disciplinary mechanisms to help to guide them and is used to uniform, for uniform maintenance of those standards. These are considered to be the minimum standards that board members should be able to maintain in terms of ethical standards. So the provisions of the act and accountability are, on the left are the provisions that apply only to board members or trustees, board of trustees. So your charter schools and your traditional public schools. And that's the Code of Ethics and mandatory training. So as board members, you have to comply with those and make sure that you're always staying in compliance with those two things. And then things that, provisions that apply to all school officials have to do with prohibitive acts, which have to do with conflicts of interest as well, and then your disclosure statements. So you all know that in January, if you're re-s sworn in, you have 30 days to get those disclosure forms in to the Department of Education. These are public documents, once they're, once they're completed. And then anybody that's returning, that's not being sworn in again in January, has until April 30th to get those done. Okay? And if she hasn't already, Ms. Howard will be getting after you if you haven't done those. But typically, boards are getting that information through the State Department of Education and they can go in and complete that. I always suggest that when you complete it for one year, you print it out before you submit it so that you have that to look at over the next year. Okay? And all of us, officers at NJ SBA have to abide by the disclosure forms and they do also because they're board members in their own districts. But professional staff at NJ SBA, we have to complete these also. So we do these every year by April 30th. If somebody's hired at NJ SBA or if one of your administrators is hired, then they would have to do it within 30 days. Okay? So who enforces the act? The School Ethics Commission. So for tonight's purposes, the SEC is the School Ethics Commission and not the Securities and Exchange Commission. And the body that, they are the body that's charged with enforcing the act. There are nine total members, right now we have six that are functioning as, at the, at the School Ethics Commission. There are five non-school officials, two board members, school board members, though there are two, those two seats are vacant right now. And then two school administrators, there's one seat that has a school administrator on it. And then no more than five can be from any one political party because they do want the School Ethics Commission to be nonpartisan. And there are nine members and they're usually appointed by the governor for a three-year term. Okay. So again, those financial and personal relative disclosure forms, you have to do those within 30 days of being re-s sworn in or sworn in as a new board member or when somebody takes their position, their first day of work for administrators. And then returning school officials have to do it by April 30th of each year. So what training is mandatory? You are some of the most trained school officials, school board members in the country because you have four levels of mandatory training. The first one is Governance One. It used to be that you had the whole year to be able to take Governance One, now you have 90 days. So anybody who joins the board who has not been on the board for more than three years would have to take, or has never been on the board, would have to take Governance One within 90 days. And Governance One or New Board Member Orientation gives you basic knowledge and skills about CUSAC, about HIB, harassment, intimidation and bullying, superintendents evaluation, the Open Public Meetings Act, and also the Code of Ethics. And then by the end of year two of your first three-year term, you need to take Governance Two, which is Finance and Policy. By the end of year three, you'll need to take Governance Three, which is about student achievement and labor relations. And then every fourth year or every re-elected year or reappointed year, you'll take Governance Four, which is Legal Updates. Okay, so Governance One is within 90 days. Governance Two and Three, you have the full year to do it. However, if you go to workshop in October and you're due to take Governance Two or Three next year, you can take it at workshop and still be covered for the mandatory training. Not so much for Governance Four. Okay? So Governance Four, you would have to take in your actual fourth year or reappointed year because those are updated every year. So if you took Governance Four this year for next year, you would be getting this year's legal updates and not next year's legal updates. Okay, make sense? Yes?
Okay, so I guess my question is twofold. The Governance Four, since I just got elected again, I have to take it, right? Can that be online or does it have to be in person?
No, it can be online. So you'll see, we provide the training through in-person, live virtual, you can go to a live virtual session, you can do live in-person, or you can do self-paced.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, there's all different kinds of, of mechanisms that we have for that. So if you go onto our website and you look at, you go to mandatory training under our services, it will show you when those different programs are being offered. Okay? Okay. And then advisory opinions. So advisory opinions are given and board members can ask for advisory opinions, any school official can, when you think something might happen in the future. Okay, I may have told you this already, but when I was on my board and I got onto my board, if I told you this already, just do this. There was another woman that ran at the same time that I did and we had April elections at the time because it was 1999. And she came to the board and she said, "My husband's thinking of running for the town council. If he should be elect, runs for town council and should be elected, would there be any conflicts of interest for me or for him?" Well, the SEC can't really tell you what conflicts he might have if he won the election, and he did win the election, but it was on proposed activity, not on something that had already happened. And so we got back as board members, as a board, all the information that she would have to abide by or think about when she, if he was elected, which again, he was. So remember, if you had an April election back in 99 and your budget failed, because we all voted on our budgets at that point, then as a board, we would have to go to the town council. If she went to the town council, then he shouldn't be seated at the town council, at the township committee level making a decision on that. If she recused herself, then he could be sitting at the table and make decisions on that. Okay? And it gave us lots of other information that was valuable, shared services, things like that, that one of them would need to recuse themselves from. But again, it did stipulate that the SEC cannot control or enforce somebody who's not a board member. So they had to come to those decisions themselves. And we were lucky that they always came about it fairly and one would participate in one thing and the other would participate in the next thing. So that was always helpful. So it's future conduct that's happening. And your board attorney on the school, on the board's behalf can request an advisory opinion. If you think you might be requesting an advisory opinion for something that's coming up that you're not sure about, the SEC is asking that you first look at the plethora of advisory opinions that are on the website or talk to your board attorney to say, "This is my situation, do you know if this has already been given an advisory opinion?" Because they don't want to be doing things multiple times and they're, they really get bombarded with advisory opinions and with complaints. Okay, then a complaint, or actually, so six members of the SEC would have to vote in the affirmative for that advisory opinion to become public. And oftentimes they are, if they feel it has broad-reaching or far-reaching impact, then they will make those, those public information. Okay, so if you ask for an advisory opinion, because we've had a lot of board members, not here, but a lot of board members who've said, so I asked for an advisory opinion, but it was just an opinion. So it really, I am here to tell you that we at NJ SBA cannot make up the stuff that happens in New Jersey. We just can't. Okay, all this stuff is true. So if you have asked for an advisory opinion and then you turn and you've been told by the SEC, by the School Ethics Commission, that you should not engage in those, in certain activities, and you engage in those, if somebody files an ethics charge against you, it will most likely not be the lowest punishment or disciplinary action because you've already been warned. So it's like if you went up to a policeman and said, "I'm thinking about doing 65 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone." And the police officer says, "I wouldn't do that if I were you." And then you go out and do that, you're absolutely going to get a ticket, right? You're not going to get just, you know, a verbal, "Okay, I'll let you off this time you didn't know." So that's where the advisory opinions are telling you what would constitute a violation of the Ethics Code and you need to be advised of that and you need to be really cognizant of that. Okay? So these are some advisory opinions that were released in 2024. There was one that asked, can a board member review? I'm only going to read a couple of these and you're going to get this tonight. I'll send it to Ms. Howard in a PDF so you'll have it. The reason we don't bring it in anymore is because we do this in November, December, we update it for the year, but then there's always changes. And so we found, I think two years ago, that we had about 400 copies of a PowerPoint that we had to make changes to that now we're no longer really accurate. So we don't do that anymore, we make the changes when we need to and then we send it to you in a PDF. So can a board member review the resume of candidates before voting on the superintendent's recommendation? So the SEC said, whether it's allowed is outside of the jurisdiction of the, the School Ethics Commission, but if allowed, the role is limited to observation and assessment. The superintendent solely recommends hiring to the board. Okay, the board cannot turn around and say, "The board recommends," unless you were appointing a new superintendent. So that's the only time the board would recommend the appointment of, of staff or of personnel. And then if a board member has an aunt who is employed in the district, but she's not a member of the local union, can the board member participate in negotiations? The answer is generally no because even though the person is unable to, is not part of the union, the union and the negotiated agreement always influence those of the people in the district that are not under an agreement. Okay, so they will always benefit by the negotiated agreement. And there's a bunch more there. When you get this, if you keep it electronically and save it electronically, if you right-click on any of those highlighted areas, you'll be able to get to the actual decision. Okay, and what it all contained and included. So some other advisory opinions, a child, who's, can a board member whose adult child district employee alleges that board council has a vendetta against their family, participate in matters related to board council. The SEC said to preserve, to preserve the public trust, the member should recuse themselves from any and all matters related to board council. And then can a board member who received and used an endorsement from the local union in their campaign materials participate in policy matters relevant to union members? So the SEC says, considering the type or level of union support provided and absent a financial contribution, it's not necessarily a per se conflict. When it first came out, I think it was in 2008, that if a board member received an endorsement by their district's union, their district's association, they would not be able to participate in first year in negotiations at all. And NJ SBA kept saying to the SEC, "What if they didn't ask for that endorsement?" Okay, because sometimes people don't ask for an endorsement and they get an endorsement. And in fact, the district that I had come from, there was a, a person who ran for the board who had been very vocal about our negotiations the previous year and didn't feel that the association should receive any raises that year. Ran for the board and was endorsed by the Teachers Association. So that way he wasn't able to participate in negotiations that year. So there are some very, very smart things that go on, okay? And that prohibited him from being able to participate. And in honesty, I believe rightfully so, but now they're looking at each case individually. And if the person didn't receive a financial benefit, they didn't pay for signs for you and put them all up, they didn't donate money to your campaign, then you can probably, you know, participate in negotiations, but you would have to talk to your board attorney about that. Okay? So then an ethics complaint, is anybody can file an ethics complaint against any board member. Okay? And they have to be able to do that within 180 days of the actual incident. You have to be able to stipulate what violations, what tenants of the Code of Ethics you feel the person has violated and then provide factual evidence for that. Okay? And the SEC will consider whether the facts and circumstances would lead a reasonable person to believe that the act has been violated. The reasonable person is the area that sometimes comes into, to question. Okay? So if the, the School Ethics Commission finds that somebody has violated, they've been, they've had an ethics charge filed against them and they find that the person did, they feel that the person did violate specific tenants of the Code of Ethics, they can do recommend a reprimand, which is a rebuke by the commissioner. Kind of a slap on the wrist. It's not a formal resolution. A censure, however, is a formal disapproval by the commissioner and by the SEC. And that means that that has to be read out loud at an open public meeting, telling what the, the board member's name is and what they violated and what the disciplinary measure is, okay? It does not mean what the term censure generally means, that they can't ever talk again. Okay, at a board meeting, it just does not mean that. And then there's suspension, barred from engaging in any board And then there's suspension barred from engaging in any board activity for a certain period of time. Usually it's thirty or sixty days. And then immediate termination is removal. And we never want to see any of our board members have immediate termination. Okay, because then you're really leaving the board in a difficult situation because they have one less board member. To be able to help enact things. So going to go through the code of ethics, the, the A and in the, the, um, kind of colored background there, it's kind of a very faint blue or gray. That's the tenant of the code of ethics. The standards below are what you would have to be able to use to prove that somebody violated that, that tenant of the code of ethics. So the first one is uphold and enforce all laws, rules and regulations of the state board of education. And court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. The second, excuse me, is I'll make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children. And will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual, meet the individual needs of all children. Regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex or social standing. C is confine my board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal. And help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who would be affected by them. D is carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools. But together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E is recognize that authority rests with the board of education. And make no personal promises or take private action that may compromise the board. And we're going to talk about the chain of command in a couple of minutes. And I know we've, we've talked about that and I think you all have a pretty good handle on that. I'll refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups. Or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G is I'll hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I'll provide accurate information. And in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff, the aspirations of the community for its schools. This is the tenant that's most often violated. Okay, people may forget that they heard something in executive session. Sometimes boards stay in executive session in the same place they're having their meeting and the public is just excused. And so those kinds of things. So a lot of times boards will move to another room to have executive session. That seems to work better, in my opinion anyway, because you know you were in a different room, not in this room. When something was discussed and you know that's confidential. Okay, I'll vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. Your superintendent is the person with the education background, the qualifications. The experience and the certifications to make those determinations. He has a look at every applicant that, that gets to him and say. Who is going to be the best fit for this particular school? This particular grade level or this particular department? And only he can make that determination for this board. So if you were a board member, but you were a superintendent in another school district. It doesn't give you the ability to make those decisions about appointments. Only your superintendent for your, your district is able to make those decisions for you. And then I'll support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. This is also one of those where you really need to be aware that talking outside at a function. Um, whether it be at somebody's birthday party or whatever. Don't talk about staff, don't talk about board business and you'll be a healthier, happier person. Okay, and then refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and act on the complaints at public meetings. Only after failure of an administrative solution. So there's a, um, a chain of command for everybody. There's a chain of command for parents, chain of command for staff. And your parents, you need to be able to know what that chain of command is. So you can refer people back to the lowest level in the chain. It doesn't mean that you don't want to talk to them or that you don't care about what they're telling you. You can listen to what they have to say. But you need to let them know that your job as a board member is not to fix their problem. But to give them to the right person who can help them to resolve that issue. Okay? So if a parent is calling and complaining about a teacher, you want to refer them back to the teacher. If they don't feel that there's resolution at that particular point. They can go to an assistant principal or a principal. Then they can go to possibly a department chair or a department head or an assistant superintendent. Then to the superintendent. If something gets to the superintendent or he knows is coming to him, he's probably going to let you know in executive session. That there's something that's being moved through the chain. I feel like we can get that resolved, but if we can't, then it will come to the board. And you want the person to know that you're talking to, that if they get through to the superintendent and pass this, I don't mean. That they get through to the superintendent, like they couldn't get him. If they get. If they get to the superintendent and still feel the issue's not resolved. Then they should send the board of education a letter, not to you personally as an individual board member. But to the board of education. Okay? That will go to your business administrator and your board secretary. And then it will come to the board. The superintendent will then let you know what has been tried in terms of trying to resolve the problem. And then the board can, can make a decision on that. Okay? Keep in mind also that resolution doesn't necessarily mean. That the person got exactly what they wanted. It may mean that they understand why they can't have that resolution that they wanted. Okay? Then after you hear from that person, and by the way, staff has a different chain of command. They would have a building rep that they would go to if they had a problem. And you could refer them to that person, then they would go to union leadership. And then go to the superintendent and then come to the board. But remember, after that happens, after you've referred somebody to the chain of command. You want to let the superintendent know. By the way, Mrs. Friedman called. And she's having problems with her daughter Eva's third grade teacher. Eva's thirty-three, she's not in third grade anymore. But I use that as an example. And I told, I had her go back to talking to the teacher. And that lets the superintendent know that there's something that may be in the works that may come to him or her. But it may not, and usually these things are resolved at the lowest level. Okay, so you always want people to follow that chain of command. Okay, so cases that were related to the code of ethics in two thousand and twenty-four, I'm just going to go over one of these. A board member felt that a staff member personally attacked him at a board meeting. So he called her principal, identifying himself as a board member. The board member's action to silence the public. And or encourage them not to attend future board meetings by calling their employers to get them in trouble in the workplace. Can compromise the integrity of the board. So that was a censure. Okay, if any of these, when you're looking at these at home, and I know you're going to read through every single one of these, right? When you're looking at these at home, if it says recommended censure. That means that it hasn't been determined by the commissioner. It's gone to the commissioner. But the commissioner hasn't made a decision yet. If it just says censure or reprimand. So the censure was a, a reading, a resolution at a public meeting. With this board member's name and how they had violated one of the tenants of the code of ethics. Okay? Somebody really did that. You betcha. The second one, okay, member was involved in ongoing efforts just to reverse an H I B. Harassment intimidation and bullying and code of conduct violation in her child's records. Contacts were made to the superintendent, the board, individual board members and board council to further her personal agenda. Telling you, we can't make this stuff up. This action is unrelated to board duties. The reversal directive is administering the schools. A non-board member would not have access to board council. And the act of influencing board members to overturn a C S A, a superintendent's decision could compromise the board. And that was a reprimand. Okay, so these are some of the things that happen then. Pretty much on a daily basis and we know that the S E C usually gets about fifty or so complaints of violation, you know, somebody violating the code of ethics. And usually about eighty-five advisory opinions each year. So sometimes when we feel that they're not acting fast enough on things. It's good to know the volume that they get and they don't even have a full commission right now. Okay, um, a fifteen-year board member took inappropriate action that was beyond the role of a board member. The action of the board member usurped the authority of the superintendent. Who's responsible for making disciplinary recommendations. The board member took upon themselves to go to the employee's home, pick up a letter. Presented on behalf of the employee, directed the B A not to give a copy of the letter to the superintendent. And then instead of recusing herself from the matter in which she had a personal interest. And personal involvement, the board member advocated on behalf of the employee. And questioned the superintendent recommendation of the employee. And that, the recommended suspension is for sixty days. Now that hasn't gone to the commissioner, hasn't decided on that yet. Okay? Big no-no. Don't do that. Okay? Um, you're going to be able to look at a lot of these, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about this. Recusal and abstention. This became part of the S E C's recommendation, um, I think last year. May have been at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three. So if there's a board member who's conflicted. And they want, they, there's an action before the board, a resolution or a motion before the board. They should recuse themselves from the discussion and from the vote. Okay? You don't want to abstain because the recusal indicates that you have a conflict of interest. And the S E C wants that to be a part of the motion and the, the recording of the roll call. Okay? Abstaining from a matter is really not sufficient to combat that conflict. And you want to abstain if you feel you don't have enough information. Um, you got the information too late, you don't have enough information to do that. But it doesn't represent a conflict of interest. So if you're conflicted, you want to recuse yourself. And then you would always talk to your board attorney because sometimes the voting then has different meaning to it. And that's by policy. So you would have to turn to your board attorney, Mr. Roll, and say, okay, how do we, how do we measure this then, whether it's, you know, approved or not? Okay? Some prohibitive acts, this is just an excerpt, so you need to recuse yourself if there's a benefit to you as a school official. Or your immediate family due to business interest or professional activity in conflict. Use of the position to secure unwarranted privileges. Financial involvement that may impair your objectivity. Service or employment that may prejudice independent judgment. Gift, favor, et cetera, offered to intent, offered with intent to influence and financial gain. And then other considerations is that you can't represent anybody else in an action before the board. Okay, so if a board member and your family were taking action against the board. You would have to remove yourself from the board. Okay, because you can't, can't take action against, you can't sue yourself. Okay? And, um, it's not a conflict if it's not accruing a greater gain than others. So usually talk about, um, because sometimes board members say if they have kids in the school. They'll say, well, my, my child, this happened to me. Um, my daughter was in the band at the high school. The superintendent had recommended ordering new band uniforms for all of the students. And it was in my first or second year on the board and I asked if I could vote on that since my daughter was in the band. I was told that as long as it was not purchasing a band uniform for Eva Friedman exclusively. But for the entire band. I wasn't getting any different, and my daughter wasn't getting any more of a value or any more of a benefit than anybody else in the band. So that's how you can kind of take a look at that and weed that out. So the ethics regulations definition of a benefit is direct or indirect advantage, profit, privilege or gain when, whether personal, financial or otherwise. The determining factor here is the perception of the public. It's not whether or actually it happened, but the perception of the public. Okay, and in this case, an acting superintendent's son was one of a hundred and sixty individuals, it was a large district. On a list of substitutes that she recommended for board approval. She didn't recuse herself and that constituted using her position to secure employment for her son. Due to the son's financial involvement, it might reasonably be expected to impair her jud, her objectivity and that was a reprimand. Okay? Some conflict benefit cases, um. A member is the president of the parent staff association, owns a spirit wear company that donates merchandise to sell as a P S A fundraiser. Through the company's website, using the principal to promote the sale with the families. Use of this private company to transact fundraises possesses a conflict. Board members may not conduct business, donate goods or services or collaborate with the P T O in the district in which they hold office. Parents may feel pressured and in an effort to, you know, thinking that they need to buy something. And the free advertising could garner benefits for the company. Contact with the principal could impair objectivity. And so the person, it was recommended that they receive a reprimand. Okay, immediate family definitions. Immediate family is spouse, civil union, domestic partner or dependent child residing in the same household. Relative is. The bread box. Okay, the whole ball of wax. It's spouse, civil union, domestic partner or parent, child, sibling, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, grandparent, grandchild, son, daughter-in-law. Step-parent, stepchild, stepbrother, stepsister, half-brother, half-sister. Of the individual or the individual spouse or partner by blood marriage or adoption. And that's covered pretty much in your nepotism law and in your nepotism policy. Okay, and although the term relative doesn't appear in prohibitive acts. A relative can create a conflict. And anyone not listed may be considered as an other if the conflict exists. So there is a chart on the left-hand side behind the code of ethics and behind your signing the acknowledgement that you, that we'd had this conversation tonight that you'll give to Ms. Howard. Today is March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. You need to print your name and sign it. Give that to Ms. Howard. And then behind that is that chart that gives you all of the relative conflicts. Okay, so you can look at that. That we can, at N J S B A, we considered that chart a gift from the S E C. Because it really answered a lot of questions. Okay? You may not hire a family member or relative once you are a board member. So most of the time, applications for hiring for school district will ask. Are you a family member or are you related to a board member? Okay, because if you have a daughter who's married. Her last name may not be the same as your last name and the superintendent may have no way of knowing that. So you always want to make sure that that's in place. So once you're a board member, you can't hire a family member or a relative. Unless you appeal to, it has to be in limited circumstances. It has to be difficult positions to, to hire in. And you would have to go to the executive county superintendent, superintendent would have to go to the E C S. Executive county superintendent and say. This is the person who's the best qualified for the position and has all of the certifications and experience. Oftentimes the E C S will say, please run the ad again and see if anything else rises to the top. Okay, but that's usually the parameters that they'll use. And then if that's the case, they will often say, you can hire this person. So they give the superintendent and the board a waiver to hire that person. Even though they are a family member or relative. But then that board member cannot be part of negotiations. Or a part of any matters involving personnel above their family members' chain of supervision up to the superintendent. Okay? You can however, run for the board with five hundred relatives working in the district. That would be a gigantic district. Okay? But you can run for the board, but once you run for the board and if you're appointed, if you're elected. You would have parameters that you couldn't negotiate. And you wouldn't be able to evaluate anybody in the chain of supervision, personelized above your family member or relative up to and including the superintendent. Okay? And if there was, um, going to be a superintendent search, if your superintendent was retiring or leaving to go to another district. You would not be able to participate in the selection of a search firm. Or anything that has to do with the search, including and up to appointing the next superintendent and negotiating the contract. So for collective bargaining, if you, if the relationship to board member is an immediate family member or relative. And the family member or relative works in the district. Whether they're part of the current association or not, negotiated, um, you're part of the statewide public teachers' union or not. You would not be able to participate in negotiations and not be able to ratify the contract. Okay? If you or an immediate family member are working in another district. Okay, because you know as a board member, you can't work in Trenton if you're on the Trenton board. Then you may be able, and the person is, is part of the statewide union. You would not be able to negotiate the contract. But you may be able to ratify the contract as long as the memorandum of agreement has been attained. Salary guides have all been done, all the benefits have been identified and have been selected and settled. Okay? If the person is a relative. And they're not working in the district, but in another school district. They're not a current member of a statewide public teachers' association. You probably can participate in negotiations and you probably can vote to ratify. And where there are those little asterisks in the participate in negotiations, vote to ratify. If your family member or relative or you. Are working in another district and you're part of the negotiations team at that district. You're going to be out. Okay, so the leadership in negotiations in another district. Of you or of a family member or relative would knock you out of everything. Okay? Board members who receive union endorsement may be conflicted, collective bargaining, we already talked about that. I think we've got that handled, right? Um, impact on committee assignments when a. Impact on committee assignments when a relative works in the district. This came out at the end of 2023, and it was pretty huge. We used to say, if you have a family member or relative, you can't participate in negotiations and you can't participate in any chain, anyone in the chain of supervision above your family member or relative up to and including the superintendent. This changed that. A board president has a child who's working as an instructional assistant in the district. The SEC said that they could not choose the chair or committee members or be on any committee that remotely touches upon or directly relates to the family member's employment. This was big. Okay? Including but not limited to personnel, negotiations, instruction and program, and finance committees. So where something would have knocked somebody out of two things previously, now there's a plethora of things that they could be knocked out of. A board, in the same district, a board member's spouse works in the technology department, and the SEC said they couldn't be involved in any and all matters, including service on a committee that remotely touch upon or directly relate to the spouse's employment, including without limitation, personnel, negotiations, and/or finance committees. Okay? So this made things a little bit more complicated when there's a board member that has a relative or immediate family member that's working in the district or when they're the board president. And then a board member's domestic partner is a transportation specialist. The SEC advised that it would be prudent not to serve on the transportation committee. That goes without saying. Okay? Advice of counsel defense for penalties. So there is a advice, defense of counsel that, or advice of counsel that can be used. However, it usually only serves to mitigate the penalty. So if you had advice of counsel and all four of those things have to be, all four factors have to be present and have to be met. The prerequisites for advice of counsel defense for penalties. Approval advice was received prior to the action. The individual who offered the advice or approval relied upon possessed authority or responsibility. All pertinent facts and circumstances were fully disclosed, and the individual complied with the advice received. Okay? If those are not in place, or even if they are in place and the person does that, and the SEC, somebody files an ethics charge against them, and they declare advice on advice of counsel, that's their defense, they may have a lesser penalty if they're found to be in violation. Okay? It doesn't negate the penalty. It just may lessen the penalty. Volunteering in school. As you know, board members are generally people who have come through volunteering in their schools. You are not prohibited from volunteering in the schools, but you have to think about how often you're in the schools to do that volunteering and what kind of authority either is given to you or you have taken upon yourself to direct staff or students. Okay? If you're in the schools, I like to use example of, I had a district a while ago who had three elementary schools. One of the elementary schools, they considered a class parent to be in the building once a month. Okay? Another elementary school said they want the class parent in there three times a week. I don't know what they had them doing, but they wanted them in the school three times a week. The three times a week would be a problem because you could be considered to be staffed by somebody, and that would usurp your ability to be a board member. And you also don't want to have any kind of authority over students or staff, and you don't want to need to be directed by students or staff either. Okay? So those are those prerequisites there. So it's the frequency and the level of involvement that you'll have. If you're working with a PTO, PTSA, PTA, and you're involved in a book fair or holiday gift, you know, holiday boutique or something like that, don't count money, don't collect money, don't take money to the bank. Okay? Let somebody else do that. It's an accident waiting to happen, and really, it's an accusation waiting to happen. Okay? And we have had those. So again, volunteering in the schools. If it's considered an inherent violation, then that would be a problem. If it's not an inherent violation, and each situation is really considered unique. So it's one-time, infrequent. You're going on a class trip with one of your kids or one of your grandkids or nieces or nephews. That's not a problem. Field trip, saperon, that's not a problem. Meet across America, not a problem. Okay? These are one-time things. If you're constructing sets for the play or, you know, to help the marching band move their equipment on and off the field, those are not problems. Okay? As long as you're not directing other people to do those things and as long as when you're working on the sets, students are not involved in that as well. Okay? And then executive officer of a PTA or a homeroom parent, you need to consider what your involvement is. And if you're on the PTA and there's a donation now that's being made to the board, and you're very active in the PTA or PTO, you'll want to recuse yourself from that donation. Okay? Social media. When a board member makes a statement, the SEC considers the content, the substance, and the context of the statement. We have a disclaimer that I'm going to take you to, and I'm going to cut this short because you're going to have this to be able to look at later, and I know you have a meeting to do. So you want to use the disclaimer to clarify that you are speaking as an individual, not as a member of the Board of Education, nor do you speak for the Board of Education. Nor does your opinion necessarily represent that of the Board of Education. Okay? The suggested disclaimer is right there. The following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the Board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinions. That used to be a get out of jail free card. It's no longer a get out of jail free card because depending on what the content of your post is or your communication is, if the SEC feels that a reasonable person in your community would not be able to discern that you are not speaking as a board member, you will get nailed for that and be found in violation. Okay? So use the disclaimer, but just understand that it doesn't particularly get you out of jail free. Okay? It may come up that if your content is such that you're talking about the board and what you do on the board, it's not going to, it's not going to protect you. Okay? So does the disclaimer automatically protect me? No. But it does help to clarify the capacity in which you're speaking. What would cause me to be in violation? Again, the content, the message being delivered to the public, and not using the disclaimer. If I don't use a disclaimer, does that mean I'm automatically in violation? Not necessarily, but please use the disclaimer. And then must I use the exact wording? No. But it's best to use the exact wording. Okay? Just some social media guidance. Once you're elected as a board member, if you had a campaign, social media post or social media site or, you know, profile, stop using that because that inherently say to your public that you are now speaking as a board member. Okay? You can like or share a post from a personal account. And if you're an administrator of a social media account, it's not a per se violation, but you would have to work through those things that are listed there as well. I want to thank you for serving your community, your students, and your staff. Okay? This is some of the best work that you can do as an individual in a community. It's often thankless, and I hope that it's not thankless for you because we appreciate you, and I hope that your community does as well. It seems to me that you're making great progress. It's not, it doesn't happen overnight. It really doesn't. All of those test scores and things, that's not going to, you know, elevate 50%, 50 points in one year. But you're making great strides. And as long as you continue to stay focused on those things, you will continue to do that. And then here are some of the resources that we used for this program. I thank you so much for your attention. And do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mary Ann Freeman. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you. We look forward to seeing you again real soon.
Okay. Call me and let me know about some dates for, for retreats.
Yes, we will. Thank you so much.
Should I give this to Dennis or to you guys? Dennis? Okay. Thank you so much. Have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you.
All right. So board members, we're going to move on to old business. We had one item from the February 24th, 2025 meeting. Students, Naomi Lopez and a few junior class officers were here making a recommendation to the board for digital ability to pay for different events and things of that nature, whether it be Vemo or Cash App or other digital type fundraising activities for payments. They made a great plea to us, made a lot of sense in our digital age, but currently, the high school in the district does not have the ability to process those requests at this time. And so that's where we are with that. But of course, we'll continue to look into opportunities in the future. We will now move on to board comments by board committee chairs. In your agenda, there's an order for us to follow. So we'll start with Larry, Trail or Face, and move down from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. The FACE Committee has not met yet for this month. We will be meeting on, we'll be meeting this week. So, but can I, I wanted to give some updates about the legislative committee for New Jersey School Boards, but I might save that for individual board comments.
Yes, board comments would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. The report on the facilities committee. I'll provide an update of the various maintenance projects currently in progress across the district. Required maintenance projects for Capital City High School and Grant Roof Section. The purchase orders have been issued. Work at Capital City is already in progress. The Trenton Central High School cafeteria extension, the outdoor tent area. The project is approximately 45% complete. The tent erection is scheduled to begin on Monday, March 24th, which was today. Done middle school, we have restroom upgrades. A site meeting was held with a general contractor and district plumbing mechanics to review renovation plans for the four-step bathrooms. Reserve capital maintenance project, Ziegler Warehouse Building, the asbestos removal is 95% complete. Demolition is scheduled to start in two weeks. Electrical service upgrades for Harrison, Kemballiter, and Franklin. POs have been issued. Work expected to begin mid to late April. The new elevator addition at Harrison, the purchase orders were issued on March 14th. The kickoff meeting is yet to be determined. HVAC upgrades at Harrison and Franklin. Contractors are on board and equipment is being ordered. Renovation and alterations at Tinga, Ninth Grade Academy. The project is currently out for bid. Bits are due May 25th with the notice to proceed scheduled for June 1st, 2025. Emergency required maintenance projects. Relocations of buses and B and G, building and ground fleet vehicles. The Township of Ewing is preparing for excavation at building and ground site, necessitating the relocation of several district vehicles. Department of Health kitchen inspections, ongoing inspections are being conducted by the county office. DCA fire inspections, state inspections are currently in progress, and the right-to-know surveys and chemical disposal notification process is ongoing. That's it for the projects ongoing. I'd like to announce that we will be, we're putting together a committee with the superintendent to start the naming process of the new school that's being built by SDA in the South Ward. We will be sending out a press release announcing to the community the date of the first meeting for people to come forward with their suggestions on a name for the building. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Governance Chair. We met on Tuesday, March 11th at 6:00 PM, and there's four items that I'd like to just share with the, with the board. I have shared with some of the board members as well already. We've made some enhancements to our board agenda. One is tailor content for each of our sections of our board agenda to make sure that it's easy to find various items that you may have questions on or may want to reference later on, easy reference point. Just enhancements to our overall, overall flow of our board agenda to make our meetings efficient and effective and time conscious. You notice that we have in terms of our board, comments by committee chairs, a list of committee chairpersons, a list of our order will make, help us to expedite our meetings as well. Number two, wanted to make sure that we recognize and understand for tonight, we have our pre-conference with our superintendent. We do have, and we go back into executive session. We go through our schedule for, from start to finish for this year to complete our superintendent's evaluation. Number three, we want, we looked at also August retreat. One of the main things we did want to focus on is our strategic plan at our August retreat as one of our main topics. But I'm also looking for other board members to share what they think is important for our retreat so we can include those items for our retreat in August. Number four, tonight, we also have, we have to discuss and share with the, with the board and the public appointment of a new board member. We had a board member on the board resign. Sasa resigned. And so I'd like James Roll to share the process and our policy around the new appointment of a new board member. James Roll, thank you.
Yes. Quickly stated, the policy, the bylaw, 0143, I believe it is, that speaks to the appointment of a new board member when a board member is lost. Simply states that in situations like this where you just have a board member resign midterm, the board has to publicize the vacancy. I will recommend putting it, publicizing like we would do a public meeting in a, in a publication like the Trentonian, Star Ledger, something like that. And then the board is allowed to receive candidates and then invite people in for interviews. The interviews can take place in executive session if the board chooses, but any conversation about the candidates or their interviews must be done in public, and obviously, the vote must be done in public as well.
Thank you, Mr. Roll. So we'll start that process, once we get the add in the paper. That process will begin after this meeting. Thank you.
All right. So nothing specifically for grievance, but we did meet with HR last week, getting updates from that meeting. I did want to highlight just two things. Specifically, my favorite section is the new hire section, right? Where we have a lot of people coming in, and I'll just highlight a few things, right? We have a few people coming in at bus aides at $21 an hour. Bus drivers coming in at $35 an hour. And we have a variety of different positions open, right? Including special ed teachers, science teachers, speech therapists, math teachers, right? School nurses, right? And not just for the board, but for the public as a whole, right? These are amazing jobs with amazing salaries to boot with it, right? You know, some of these salaries, you know, really range, starting off at like, you know, in the 60s, right? And some of them essentially are kissing like 100K, right? So these are opportunities in the district that we provide to allow you to, you know, feed your family and really give back to our kids in a very meaningful way. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is not just coming into the district, but also how many people stay with our district, right? If you look towards the section of retirements, right? We have people retiring. I think the lowest time served, right? And most of these are teachers, right? The lowest time served was 14 years. And somebody's retiring, right, on the higher end, custodian engineer, 41 years with the district. All right? And so I averaged everybody out, and really, on average, right? Everyone stayed essentially about 25 years with our district, which means that we are providing a great space for people to really thrive here. So, you know, I'm just excited to highlight those two pieces of the HR report. And I encourage everyone to not just come into the district, but stay with us for a while. Get that good tier-one pension going, all right? And enjoy your time here at Trenton Public Schools.
Good evening. My report for negotiations is going to be short and sweet. And it is that we just settled the contract with our secretary's bargaining unit, and we're very happy about that. So, thank you. And we are... We just signed off? Well, at least I can say this. For the first time in 15 years, we are up today with all our bargaining contracts.
Yeah, that's great. All right. That's it. All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's fantastic. Operations, Mr. Bowie.
So we met Tuesday. We went over transfers. The transfers was a total of $66 million. Two million of that from central office. The secretaries were... The Secretary's Report, Treasurer's Reports, travel, and the bill list. And for February twenty-eighth and March fourteenth, we paid forty-one million, one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. We also got some good news that the three-year comprehensive equity plan is being shared with the state, so that's a good thing. And then lastly, I list out the donations because we're really grateful for the sacrifices that people make for our students. Organization, Philadelphia Eagles, NFL three-thousand-dollar donation to Trenton Central High School. It's for Girls' Flag Football Initiative. Yeah, Isles Incorporated, Mural Furniture Decorations valued at two-thousand-five-hundred-two dollars for Trenton High School R&B. Women Who Moves Mercer, Non-Perishable Foods valued two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, Family and Community Engagement. Shine and Inspire Hygiene Products valued two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, Family and Community Engagement. Girl Scout Books valued at three-hundred dollars, Family and Community Engagement. Bethel United Holy Church, five-hundred dollars to Stokes. Clothing and toys for students. Smith Family Foundation, Trenton Thunder, and Book Smiles. Five thousand dollars to Stokes for library resources and winter jackets. And we thank folks very much for their sacrifices for our children.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am giving the update for the Policy Committee. So we met, and you will see on the agenda, we have a first reading, select policies for the eight-thousand and nine-thousand series. For second reading, we have select policies for the three-thousand, four-thousand, five-thousand, six-thousand, and seven-thousand series. I am happy to say that we are up to date with reviewing and revising our policies. We were meeting twice a month to try to get that done, but now we are just going to meet once a month. And, but we still need to continue to review the requisite policies and make changes as suggested by our vendor Strauss S-Bang. We're also going to look at what regulations needs to, what regulations need to be reviewed and revised as well. That's it.
Okay, so, good evening. I am reporting on behalf of the Teaching and Learning Committee, and it met on Tuesday, March eighteenth. And at this meeting, we reviewed specific agenda items. They were in reference to numerous programs, some that we highlighted. One was the expansion of Avid and the comparative data that supports this particular expansion. We also highlighted a program that was tentatively named Future Forward, and this program is being designed to support students who may have had challenges with interrupted education or challenges with language learning. We also took a look at professional learning that's being provided, focused on literacy during the summer and being offered to all staff that are involved with the teaching of literacy. There's also numerous parent engagement activities that will take place over the summer. And we also took a look at social-emotional learning activities that were based on the standards that were set. We also received an update concerning, a concern that was brought to the Board back in December about a student with dyslexia and the supports that were given to the student and the family after that particular concern was brought to our attention. And in fact, there are further conversations to be had regarding that particular student and the support for the teacher that will be upcoming. And that was basically it for our Teaching and Learning Committee for this particular month. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Committee Chairs. We will now move on to public participation. I read the advisory for all. The Trenton Public School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on any school or school district issue that a member of the public may feel is a concern to residents of our school district. Each person who signs up to comment will have five minutes. You will be notified when your five minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please address all the comments of the Board President. Please conduct yourself in respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. Comments that adhere to these guidelines will not be interrupted. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your five-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the Board Superintendent will be able to address your questions to the extent provided by the law. We also ask that the members of the public not interrupt the speaker during their public comment time. Our first person for public comment participation is Paul Pathé, representing himself, and he has a question around the school district's school name. Mr. Pathé.
My name is Paul Pathé. And I'm speaking about the school system of Trenton. And I had an incident with my granddaughter at the, at, I call it Mama Mika School, but it's down West Day Street, all right? But I say it should be called Mama Mika. She did a lot. And when I got there, the staff handled it real good. But the biggest problem was the mother told her child to come to school and fight. It wasn't the school. They handled it very professionally. But it was sad to see how a mother gonna send her daughter to school to fight. And my granddaughter was involved in it too, but she got discipline for that. Because I don't send them to school to fight. You want to fight, you get paid for it, you know? But when the mother got there, she was using a lot of bad language that shouldn't be used in a public school. And it goes back to say, one time I came in front of y'all and I was talking about Monument School. Well, I owe that principal a big apology. And I said it here, and I, I was looking from on the outside until I got in the inside. The school is ran right, and I want to give her a ten. It's ran just like Ms. Pathé's school. Ms. Pathé's school, my daughter came from out of there. She's about ready to graduate and be a state trooper. Now, so the schools in Trenton is ran perfectly. All the things that he, I was listening to everything, Doc. I ain't got my glasses on, forgive me. You know, when you get there, you lose your eyesight, so forgive me, brother. But the schools are ran perfectly, but we got to get the mothers on board. It's not the schools. It's the mothers that's not on board. Because if I can get the edu, if I could just go back in time and get all the education that y'all providing for the kids today, I wouldn't have made the bad choices I made for myself. The kids do not really know, and I don't think the mothers know, what y'all offering them, their child. Man, y'all made a big, big achievement to where I came out of school in seventy-eight. When I came out of school in seventy-eight, I couldn't read and read and write. They gave me my high school diploma. But today, you got the curriculum here. These kids, there's no reason for them to go to school and fight. You know, do you really understand what I'm saying? Y'all got it, y'all, I mean, it's no excuse today. What we gotta fight is the social media. Because that's our war with the, that's the war y'all have. Y'all really actually fighting the social media. Because the kids get on social media and they transferring this and transferring that, and then when they get to school, they're fighting. And it's sad to see how kids not going to school and getting the education, and they going to school to fight. So I'm not saying from the Board that y'all doing anything wrong. And y'all can do this right, and y'all can do that right, but the parents gotta get involved.
Got to admit, Mr. Pathé, one minute. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the parents don't get involved, it's just, it's a waste. Because as long as y'all fighting on social media, kids, some kids gonna go to school and get it, but a lot of kids ain't. In this day and time, our children have to go to school and get it. I'm gonna close this with a note, too. What happened to the picture of the first mayor? I'm not gonna mention his name. He went to Trent High, and he graduated from Trent High, the mayor of New York City. Why Trent High ain't named after him? I'm gonna ask you that question when I see you again. You know who I'm talking about. I'm gonna ask you, because I'm gonna see you, I'm gonna ask you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Pathé. God bless you, too. One moment, please. Do you have a student that signed up? Speaking of, the young lady to the right of me, to my left, to my... No, she didn't. Okay. Thank you. Just want to confirm that. You were the student that signed up to speak. Just confirming that. Our next participant for public is Joyce White. Thank you. Increasing use of TCHS pool. Is Joyce White here? Our next speaker is Judy Martinez from TESSA, Human Resources. Judy?
Hi, good evening. Board members and Superintendent. My name's Judy Martinez, and I'm here, I represent the Trenton Educational Secretaries Association. I'm here tonight to discuss the concerning lack of meaningful collaboration between Human Resource Department and our unit. The purpose of the union is clear. To represent collective interest in our members, to ensure fair treatment, to advocate for our unit. Likewise, the Human Resource Department plays a vital role in managing employees' relationships and ensuring compliance with labor laws. However, the current disconnect between Human Resource and TESSA has created issues that we have voiced to the Superintendent and to the Board numerous times. We have witnessed patterns of limited communication, dismissive attitudes, a lack of proactive engagement, or just no response at all from Human Resource. I have repeatedly requested information from Human Resources, which has gone unanswered for months. One of the reasons we request information is to enable TESSA to police the actions of the administration to ensure Human Resource is in compliance with the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement between the parties. We are legally entitled to do that. Decisions impacting our members are being made without adequate consultant, consultants, and input from union representatives. Lack of transparency breeds mistrust and resentment. Concerns raised by the union are often met with dismissiveness rather than a genuine attempt to understand and address the underlying issues. Policies and procedures are being implemented without collaborative discussions, disregarding the collective bargaining agreement and the spirit of partnership. Instead of working together to solve problems, there is a retro, there is a reactive approach, dealing with issues only after they escalate. The breakdown, this breakdown in communication and collaboration is, has tangible consequences. It leads to increased grievances and disputes, consuming valuable time and resources. We urge the Human Resource Department to respect the collective bargaining agreement. As much as I come in here to discuss all the mishaps of this district, I love hearing everything that this district does for these students and the staff and all the wonderful things that happen in this district. But if you do not address what's wrong with the district, you can never fix it. You cannot sit up there and ignore the things that are happening that are bad in the district. Everything isn't always all good.
Two minutes, Ms. Martinez.
And unless you plan on helping people out and doing things and putting policies and procedures in place that will help the employees, you're going to get nothing but grievances in return. Thank you.
Ms. Marcel Torado, Marisol.
Good evening, everyone. Marisol Torado, TESSA Vice President. I'm here today to speak about the issues in HR. We tried our best to communicate over and over again with the head of HR, and who have always mentioned the issues we continue to have without resolve to the Superintendent as well. As you all know, I retired as of March first. And though I am still in my TESSA Vice President position, I did not expect to be speaking at a Board meeting anytime soon. But here I am, and I'm pretty annoyed about it. But enough is enough. On Friday, we discovered that we have a secretary that submitted verification of previous work experience two years ago and was never paid for it, and she submitted it twice. We now have all the emails that she sent to HR. She will be paid from the date that she submitted it. Another secretary reported that she did not submit her previous experience as an administrative assistant because the generalist has told her she can only submit it if she worked in a school. Depending on which generalist you're lucky to get depends on the interpretation on work experience and salary adjustment. We have gone back and forth with HR regarding prorating our secretaries' days. Our secretaries' days are not prorated. We finally resolved this issue with the last head of HR. Here comes a new one, and it starts all over again. Then we think we resolve it, and every single time there's a new generalist on, that comes on board, here we are again. A new member reported that she did not receive any of her entitled days when she started. I again reached out to HR to let them know. I get an email back that said that her days were prorated, and we're back again. At one point, it was happening with every new secretary, and just when we think we resolving each time, the nonsense starts again. The new secretary also did not receive her salary adjustment on this Board Agenda after she was told in writing that she would. She will get the salary adjustment from the date of hire because she submitted all of the required documentation before she startcarded. And don't get me started on the ongoing so-called process. I don't understand how you have a new employee come in, you call them, you offer them a job, they come in, because you called them to come in, they have their paperwork in their hand, and then the generalist says to them, "Oh, don't give me that right now. Contact me sometime next week to schedule an appointment so that you can bring the paperwork in." The same paperwork she has in her hand. If you wonder why that process takes so long, that's why. The lack of knowledge in HR is insane and should be completely unacceptable.
One minute, Ms. Torado. One minute, please.
One minute? There is no rhyme or reason on how this HR functions, and at times...
She have two, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two, two and a half now? At times, they were submitting salary adjustments for previous experience data and verify. But when a secretary does submit all of the required documentation, they're still not paying them? The turnover rate in that department is so high, it makes one wonder why you aren't questioning that. What kind of experience is required to work in HR? What information, training, or tools are given to anyone when they start in there? And I'm standing here asking you those questions when I worked in the same HR before. It is not hard to complete your job efficiently. Where is the supervision? The only consistency in this department is the incompetence that we continue to see in HR, and the district continues to condone it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torado. Darren Freedom Green?
Good evening, Superintendent Earl, Board President. Congratulations, bro. I didn't know they put you at the top of the voting poll. Congratulations. Congratulations. I want to talk to a couple of issues. I have a couple of updates that I'm excited about, but I want to address what... but I want to address what I struggle with right here in this moment. The superintendent's presentation was on point. It gave us goals that we've achieved, it gave us goals we're working towards, and it laid out a vision of where we're going. Whether it's parents listening online, community members like myself, staff members, even board members who are here, you have a clear mental picture of where we are, but more importantly, as Dr. King says, where do we go from here? I was offended, disrespected, and I really felt violated listening to the second conversation. It was between the trainer and the board members. And I'm wondering, as you sit up here, you, I all know you personally and professionally, you have great character, commitment, and care for this district. How did you arrive at a decision of deciding to do a board training at the expense of the people? Nothing that trainer was talking about was pertinent to any of us that are sitting here. And really, we were tortured listening to it because the information is relevant to, for, and about you. So how did you think that was okay to take our time to sit here to listen to something that I should consider going forward should be done in executive session? It's the trainer, it's you, it's the information, it's what you need. If, and I've committed to the superintendent to get this room packed full of parents and community members, there's no way with parents who are working two and three jobs are going to come down here, sit in chairs exhausted, probably have to go back to work, and then sit in here for an hour or so listening to a training that's not pertinent to them or their reality. We need to change that. It's inappropriate to do, it's disrespectful, and again, it's offensive. I'm not going to come to this podium and be disrespectful, even though I feel disrespected, because I've sat in this space and seen coffins rolled up, I've seen signs and disrespect. I don't ever want to go there. And I think this board has been a great part of moving us to a really great place. But just tonight, I'll be honest with you, as I look you in the eyes, I was disappointed that you decided to do that. Let's not ever do that again. It's disrespectful to the people who sit here, it's disrespectful to people and community members who try to commit with you to this great mission and vision of creating an institution where our babies can learn and grow. The two updates are, we're just about in place to start with the high school, with the, uh, entrepreneurship program that we're doing. It'll be eight weeks for the high school students. When they leave the program, there'll be official LLCs. What are we struggling with here? Attendance and really good behavior. So in the lessons that we're teaching, we're moving them through courses where they become a business, an institution, a brand. And it changes how they value themselves, others, and their community. And I think it would have a great impact on students coming to school now because the thing that they're learning about, the thing that they're growing through is benefiting the greatest weapon that they have, which is themselves. As we do updates and we move it forward, I'm gonna be excited to come down here and give you good news about good things, which what we should do when we come to this podium, this can't always be a...
Two minutes, Mr. Green.
It's, okay. And the last thing I'll say is I'm working with the amazing principal at Darling C. McKnight, Mr. Elijah, with, I'm like the elder gene now, my grandson goes there. So I'm over there consistently now. Uh, he's five years old, but he's a whole and full. But also, some of the work that I'm gonna be doing, and I said to the principal, I committed to do it, I'll speak to any of the students who are having problems with behavior or attendance and doing that work. And just so people are listening, I'm not being paid for any of that work because I'm doing that work to honor the beautiful matriarch that that school is named after. She was mentor to me. And I think that's how we transform this district, by doing the work that needs to be done, by speaking not about the babies but into them. But I just want us to be clear about where we're going and how we're gonna get there. It will require all of us who live here to be a part of getting us to where we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That ends our public participation. We now have... Yes, Mr. Bowie? Okay, all right, sir. All right. Board discussion, national consent agenda? Can I have a motion to, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Was it properly moved and seconded? Question on the motion? What's the question? Right here, HR. All right. One other thing I want to share with you in reference to the board agenda announcement is, uh, two employees were pulled from the terminations, 115463 and 115363. This reflect in the 325, 32425 board meeting minutes. This is our minutes for tonight, right? That is the adjustment. Excuse me, Mr. Rowe? Okay, can I have a motion to re-adopt the agenda with that change?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Roll call.
Jill Truhart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson. Jean Bowie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels-Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Uh, yes, just recused from anything. Oh, we're not there? Okay, all right, so yes, yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so the, the board's consent agenda has been properly moved, seconded, and approved. Any board discussion on the action of the consent agenda? Any questions? Seeing, seeing though we did a roll call, we approved it correct, so now we'll move on to... I thought we did that already. Okay, so we amended now, okay, now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Probably moved and seconded, roll call?
Jill Truhart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson. Jean Bowie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels-Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes, but I'm recused from anything involving aisles.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes, and I recuse myself from anything involving aisles.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes, but recusing all things related to great-grand school.
Motion passed.
Now, in terms of board, board member comments, I do want to make a, a first comment. Um, want to make, have a moment of silence. We had two former board members, Juanita Joyner, as well as Algonon Ward, transitioned, uh, un, into eternal life, as well as we had Rocky Peterson, our former board council, also transitioned from this life to eternal life. So I want to have a moment of silence for those three members of our community. Thank you. Any additional, now we open up for additional board comments. Mr. Bowie?
Uh, yes, so, um, I think that, uh, it's important for the public. I just want to go on record that we are required by law to have our ethics, um, training in the public. Um, and, and that, that's been done because it, it forces us to be, to act responsible for the things that we are accountable for. And so, you know, I don't think that was known. So I think it's important that folks know that, that we do it every year. And this time, it just happened to be back-to-back with our, um, self-evaluation. But, but we are required by law to have our code of ethics training in the public so that there is no way we can deny that we weren't taught. The public knows exactly the grounds, uh, and the things that we're responsible for. So I, I think that, uh, it's important to, that everybody knows that's why we have to do it in the manner in which we do it, right?
I'd also like to add that besides, um, it having to be in public and not be done in, um, in executive session, one of the purposes is for stakeholders to also learn the things that we need to do, what we're responsible for, and so that they can really also be involved in, in, um, evaluating us the proper way. There are things that, uh, as Mr. Batea said earlier, he didn't know how things worked at the school until he was in the school. And so, that's one of the things that we're help, we're hoping, um, to see our stakeholders learn about the board. But at the same time, I was wondering, and maybe this is something that we can discuss later on in committee, is if maybe some of these trainings can be held with the face, uh, committee meetings and made public. You know, because we have to, everyone has to be, all, all the board members have to be there. So it has to go through the process of going public. So, something to think about. Yes.
Yeah, just very briefly, uh, one thing I wanted to, not to this discussion, but a different discussion. Uh, I just want to salute the, uh, the kids at Trenton High. Uh, over this past weekend, they had an amazing Aladdin performance. I am slightly ashamed to admit that I had to be a whole thirty-four years old before I ever saw Aladdin in my life. All right, that's true story, all right, but they performed it excellently. Um, I know I was there for the Saturday bilingual, um, uh, performance. Um, so outside of them just, uh, doing an amazing job, uh, pretty much putting on a Broadway performance. I love the bilingual aspect of it because if anything, it really forced me. It was just like, oh, okay, I'm learning very specific phrases, right, that I had no idea about. Or, you know, just the context really helped educate me. And I know that's, uh, that's an effort that we're trying to do kind of in the schools itself, right? You know, really prepare our students or, you know, not just, you know, graduating from Trenton, but really being, you know, not just US but global citizens. And I thought that that was amazing because there were so many students, uh, that were performing that, uh, you know, openly said this was the first time they ever really had to learn and speak a different language. So they were learning real time along with us. So I just thought that was an amazing performance. Wanted to highlight that and, um, uh, and everybody involved in that performance. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to share that, um, I represent, um, I serve as a representative on the Board of Directors for New Jersey School Boards. And, um, at a recent meeting, just as we're talking about budget here in the district, they were also talking about budget. And just for our information, um, their budget this year is going to have a 1.5% overall increase, uh, in the dues that we pay. So we'll, we'll have to, uh, put out some additional funding to continue our membership in New Jersey School Boards. Um, there is however, a strong focus on, um, staff development. But again, it's a 1.5% increase in, um, members, uh, dues. And also, there'll be a large degree of variability in those dues. I'm not sure why that is. I think, uh, Mary Ann, I know, I see her face, right? Mary Ann also talked about this, uh, new quarterly online, online newspaper, the, um, Capital Watch. Um, and that Capital Watch provides critical updates on pending legislation that could significantly impact New Jersey schools and students and communities. So that's something that we do need to pay attention to, especially in light of things that are changing. Uh, also, the New Jersey School Boards Association had the new board member orientation weekend. They've done, um, two this year. They did one in, uh, one in, uh, January, I believe, and the other one in, um, February. And they also have a new category of membership for this year, an associate membership. And it's for district technology leaders. They can belong to New Jersey School Boards Association with an associate membership. And there are upcoming spring training programs, uh, including the Women's Conference that was held this past Friday, the School Public Relations Forum, it's, uh, coming up on April the 4th, and the Equity Expo that's coming up on April the 11th. All right, and also, our Mercer County School Boards Association last week held, held an Unsung Heroes Student Recognition Ceremony, um, at West Windsor Plainsboro High School last week. And it involved all of the high schools from the Mercer County area. And we had six or seven students, and whose names I won't attempt to say because I can't pronounce them correctly, so I don't, I wouldn't want to embarrass them or myself. But again, we had six students representing, um, the different communities at the high school as well as Capital City. And they received, uh, recognition as unsung heroes. And again, it took place at West Windsor Plainsboro High School, and our schools were very well represented. Just want to say that, so. Thank you.
Denise Johnson, Vice President?
Yes, actually, I was just about, I was going to mention the Unsung Heroes, uh, ceremony and how nice it was to, um, or refreshing it was to hear, um, those students highlighted uh, by their different school districts. So it was, it was nice to be... I had never been, um, at the West Windsor Plainsboro High School. I've always been by it, so it was nice to be there, but also to see those children just embraced by their, uh, school counselors and administrators and their parents. So it was nice to be there. So thank you, Addie, for mentioning that. And I just wanted to thank Superintendent for sharing with us the data on the student achievement. Um, it's nice to see the results of testing to ensure like your interventions are working. So, uh, and I'm, I'm glad that we're going in the right direction. So thank you for sharing that this, this evening.
Yep, so, um, had a conversation with Addie and with Denise Johnson, and we, we all agreed that it was important to, uh, have updates from New Jersey School Board Association as well as, um, Mercer County School Board Association. Both, uh, Addie and Vice President Johnson are delegates and, and alternate delegate. Denise is the delegate, and Addie Lane is our alternate delegate. And so it's important that we hear the work that's happening at the state, county, and state level. And so thank you so much for both of you. We're gonna continue to do that, um, each board meeting. If there's any updates that they might have from New Jersey School Board Association, um, they will certainly let us know and keep us informed of what's happening at that, at those other levels. Yes, Ms. Lane?
Because I'm thinking that Larry represents us in terms of the legislative aspect of the, um, New Jersey School Boards. So I'm not sure if there's anything that Larry needs to share.
Larry?
Yes, I was gonna, uh, mention that. Thank you. Thank you, Addie, for saying that. Um, yeah, so the Legislative Committee, they met on the 15th. And, uh, one of the big things that they was talking about was the full, the, the budget proposal for fiscal year 2026 got released. So they was telling us that they are having, um, public hearings to solicit feedback and input on the budget. Uh, one will be tomorrow morning on the 25th at the State House Annex. Um, that's for the Assembly Budget Committee. And for the Senate Budget Committee is gonna be Wednesday, 26th at 10 o'clock. And then on Thursday, April 10th at 10 o'clock. And that one, the Thursday, April 10th is gonna be online. Big thing with the budget this year is that, um, the budget will have, uh, a 3% increase over fiscal year 2025 with, uh, $12.6 billion with, um, proposed, with, um, expanded school preschool aid, um, and focused money on teacher retention and recruitment, uh, student health. Um, they're gonna be giving out, um, proposal $3 million for cell phone removal grants and, um, $2 million in school-led filters. I think those things are really big, important things, especially along with, um, proposal 7.5 million, which is new for high-impact tutoring grants. So these are, those are some of the few updates. We also had a speaker, um, come in and speak to us about, um, uh, from the legislature, talking about his, um, one of the bills he's a sponsor for, which is talking about cell phones, which is something that, um, a board member, Sasa, mentioned that the state was looking for. And the bill basically requires cellphone and social media guidelines, um, be developed by the, by the State Department of Ed, um, and that the policy would match each adopted school district. So, um, you know, uh, that was a, you know, was a growing conversation that we're having, and they're trying to find a way to balance, uh, knowing that we use technology. Students may need it for emergencies and, but making sure that that's not something that's going to disrupt instructional time and, um, you know, impacting student, student learning. So, uh, that, that was one of the big things that they're trying to find a way to make sure that, um, the legislation gives districts the flexibility to describe for themselves. But that's gonna be a state standard guidelines moving forward. It wants the bill passed. So those are the major updates from the Legislative Committee.
Larry, did you say 7.5 for tutoring? 7.5 million for tutoring? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, I will actually share with y'all the, uh, presentation. But, um, that, like, that's a new addition to the proposal budget. It's 7.5 million in grants for high-impact tutoring.
For grants, okay. Great, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Say yes, Ms. Weakland.
Yes, I just, I had a busy month, so I'd like to go over and, uh, thank, um, Mr. Pereira and, uh, Michelle Marazo at McKnight School for invitations to their Black History Month Living Museum at the end of February, which I attended. It was an impressive and engaging event that showcases students' dedication to honoring and educating others about significant historical figures within the African-American community. The student presentations were well-prepared and thoughtful, and it was inspiring to see their enthusiasm in bringing history to life. I also participated in Read Across America and enjoyed, uh, reading to a bunch of third graders. And while there, um, I was able to tour the rebuilt new library over at McKnight School. And it's just beautiful. It's this whole engaging area that just kind of lights up the hallways of the school. It's so bright. It's age-appropriate. There's, you know, there's some technology in there, but not a lot of technology. There's a lot of books for the kids to read and everything. And I look forward to seeing these type of libraries in all the schools because I think the kids will really benefit from it. And that's all I've got for the month. And that's all I've got for the month. Thank you.
Good. Everyone, everyone all right? Just one, one more last comment. Uh, 2025 Great Futures Dinner, a snowy soureil February 2020-25, you have this, uh, with you. I attended this event, uh, hosted by the Boys and Girls Club of Mercer County, uh, who will be named Youth of the Year. Uh, just so you know, we have, if you look inside the, uh, the, uh, program, about 98% of the students are from Trenton, or Trenton students. And one of our youth was named Youth of the Year. And that, that, that person is, uh, Johnny. He was named Youth of the Year. So he's on, in the program here, and he had attended, he'd been attending the Boys and Girls Club some time and was up last year, and it went last year, but this year he won. So it was exciting to see the work that he's been doing pay off for him as, in his senior year. So kudos to him and all the other students from Trenton, any other students from other schools, Ewing and Thrive Academy who participated, uh, in the, uh, in the Youth of the Year Program, Boys and Girls Club event for Mercer County. Thank you.
Did you notice that, um, there was only one of the, um...
I did, from Ewing.
And I thought that was very interesting. But since our young men, um, used to sit back, that's, that is so accomplished, right? So to see that was really...
Our kids are doing great work, man. Yeah. Any new business, board members? Seeing no new business, we'll go right into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, codified in SJA 810, colon, 4 dash 6, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting under certain circumstances, and whereas the Trenton Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, indicated as follows: any material considered confidential by the federal law, state statute, or court rule, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation to which the board is or may become a party to, and any matter falling within attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required to preserve the attorney-client relationship and allow the attorney to exercise his or her ethical duties as a lawyer. Matters, captions: Trust of John Ralstaff. Action: Negotiations update memorandum agreement between TBOE and Trenton Business Technical. Memorandum agreement between TBOE and Mechanics and Laborers. Memorandum agreement between TBOE and Trenton Education Secretaries Association. Action: Superintendent's evaluation discussion. Now therefore be resolved by Trenton Board of Education, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, that an executive session will be held on March 25th, 2025 for the statutory permitted purposes indicated in this resolution. Be further resolved that action may be taken by the board when it reclaims an open session. Be a following resolved that the minutes of the executive session with regard to the above subject matters shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved. No longer reverse the public interest or does not endanger any individual right to privacy. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Second.
Product Board in second, roll call.
Cheryl Truheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Bowie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Eliza Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes.
Elevation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can just sit like up and uh.
Okay.
Yeah, so Darren don't have to say y'all disrespectful. Y'all don't want Darren to pull that on you again, right?
All right, yeah, everybody, we missing four members? Motion to open public session?
Still moved.
Second.
Public move is second and roll call? No roll call, we're good? Okay, all right. Motion?
All right, to approve the contract or, yeah, the contract for NBNT? TBNT, thank you.
Second.
Public move is second and roll call?
Joel Truheart?
Yes.
Denise Johnson?
Yes.
Jeanne Bowie?
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane?
Yes.
Austin Edwards?
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez?
Yes.
Larry Trailer?
Yes.
Jeannie Weigand, um, she absent, right? Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye!